All right, um, so let me bring this over here and then we'll kick this off here one second. Uh, simply wanted to say good morning. Uh, pardon me once I do a gavel, but I know that there's no, no gavel right now. Uh, the May second, two thousand twenty-three virtual meeting of the Anaroma County Council is now in session. Today, we will hear from a handful of departments regarding the proposed FY twenty-four budget. Minister Secretary, please call the row.
Uh, Mr. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Ms. Hummer.
Present.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Radvian.
Present.
And Ms. Landbetter.
Present.
And Madam Auditor, uh, Michelle Bowler.
Present.
Mr. Chair, we have seven council members and our county auditor in attendance.
Thank you. All right. So for those that are, uh, may watch this later, this is the first time meeting for many during the virtual meeting, uh, at least a budget hearing, certainly my first. Uh, we are on Rundle TV, um, as well. And so we're broadcast, uh, I think, is there social media? Is that live on there or just a Rundle TV?
Mr. Rundle TV, which is the, you know, internet stream and, uh, local cable channels. We're also recording this, this, so the video will get posted on our website, hopefully within, in a pretty short period of time.
Okay. Uh, and for those that don't know, again, Pete Smith, uh, did any of my colleagues have any questions before we start? And I'm assuming, uh, as we progress, uh, the putting up the hand signal, uh, as, as a, um, to be able to catch our attention, that's something you've done in the past. Madam Vice Chair or, uh, Laura?
Yes.
Yes, use that raise hand as a really helpful function.
Understood. All right. So we'll begin today's presentation with the police department. All presenters, please remember to introduce yourself and continue to identify yourself before speaking each time for the people, uh, at home. Um. All right. I think the first panelists we're going to break forward is the police department. Uh, I believe we have, uh, Chief Awad, uh, Mr. Farrell, uh, Bo, uh, Zhao, and then Naomi, uh, McAllister, Beth McConnell, and David Braun. Is that correct?
I believe that's who we have in attendance here. Yes.
And so Chief, I guess I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, esteemed Anaroma County Council. Uh, we're pleased to be here this morning with you to present our proposed FY twenty-four budget. Uh, to my right, your left, I have with me Deputy Chief Kay Roberts. And she will be providing some departmental highlights a little later on as we progress through our slides. And I have our fiscal manager to my left, your right, uh, Mr. Henry Farrell, who will present our overall FY twenty-four proposed budget. Could we move to the, uh, slides, please? And if we go to the next slide. And here you'll find our department's report chart. Um, our department is comprised of four bureaus. You'll see them highlighted in blue, the Bureau of Administration, Bureau of Operations and Investigations, the Bureau of Patrol, and then our most recent newly added as of, uh, FY twenty-two, our Bureau of Community Services. That brand new bureau was established with the full support of Mr. Pittman, um, and this council, understanding exactly how critical it was for us to invest with honoring our commitment to the first pillar of Twenty-First Century Policing, building trust and legitimacy, which allows us to further foster our relationships and also prioritizing the Bureau of Community Services with the other three bureaus. Uh, move up to the next slide, please. Other way. And here highlights the President's Task Force on Twenty-First Century Policing. Um, if I could, just for a moment, you see the positions up there on the screen. Um, actually, Mr. Farrell will provide an update, uh, right now, um, as to what our current authorized positions are. Uh, yesterday, we heard Mr. Pittman present a number that was reflective of a portion of our, our department. So, Mr. Farrell.
So, yeah, during the budget message, uh, the county executive mentioned seven hundred sixty-six warrant officers. We've had a few questions about that. Um, the seven sixty-six number represents the FOP class employees. We also have eleven captains, uh, four majors, two deputy chiefs, and a chief. So the total sworn currently is seven eighty-four. I'll talk about a little bit later, uh, the details of what's new, uh, forthcoming in FY twenty-four budget.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. So as we all, uh, very well know, Anaroma County's residential, commercial, and transient population has increased and will continue to increase, increase in the coming years. Um, as a critical partner in our county's Plan Twenty-Forty, and with Mr. Pittman's and your support, uh, we intend to continue investing in the police department's training and staffing to ensure appropriate levels of staffing and resources arrive within acceptable, uh, response times to all calls for service within both our residential and business communities. Uh, with projected commercial revitalization, infrastructure improvements, multimodal transportation, and green developments, we plan to provide adequate police staffing to support this growth. After all, it's our Anaroma County Police Department that's tasked with safeguarding our community and enhancing the quality of life in our residential and commercial neighborhoods. In addition to our call volume, that includes collaborative engagement and training with our public safety partners also tasked with protecting critical state and national infrastructure and assets like the state Capitol, BWI Airport, uh, Maryland Live, Fort Me, NSA, and the U.S. Naval Academy, just to name a few. In a few moments, you'll hear a bit about our newly proposed real-time fusion center, joining our neighboring Twenty-First Century Policing Partners. This resource honors our commitment to pillar number three, technology and social media, that will enhance our capacity to provide real-time intelligence to our officers and detectives who are proactively engaged in maintaining community safety through data-driven technology. As the primary law enforcement agency for Anaroma County, one of our highest priorities is ensuring our police officers are mentally, physically, and emotionally well, honoring the sixth pillar of Twenty-First Century Policing, officer's safety and wellness. An adequately funded staff and appropriately equipped Twenty-First Century Police Department ensures that our officers feel supported and valued and loved as they're, as they continue to faithfully serve our growing and thriving community. As, as they can take time off from work to decompress from the stress and trauma they deal with on a daily basis, rather than being burdened with being drafted or working excessive overtime hours. We appreciate Mr. Pittman, his administration, and this esteemed council for these investments in our beloved police department and making Anaroma County the best place for all. Please to the next slide. And here Deputy Chief Roberts, uh, will highlight some of our critical services that we provide to the community.
Good morning, everyone. Like the chief says, I'm Deputy Chief Roberts. This screen just kind of shows our wow numbers. These were just some of the things that we wanted to put up on the screen, and I'm going to mention just a few of those highlights. If you look at that top one, the twenty-twenty-two calls for service, just want to point out that on a day average, we go to two thousand three hundred and twenty-two calls for service every single day. That's what our officers are doing. On average, our patrol officers answer two thousand four hundred ninety-nine calls in a year. One officer handles two hundred, two thousand four hundred ninety-nine calls every year. The other thing that we're very proud of is our priority one calls, which are more serious calls for service. This is when someone really needs our help. Uh, we average a four-minute response time for every one of those priority one calls, which is very impressive considering the growth and how much we've expanded in the county. And we've stayed consistent in the last five years with that four-minute response time. Um, moving on to our.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Um, so the two thousand three hundred twenty-two, uh, how many, how many personnel are actually one call at any given? I mean, I know you got like eight hundred sworn officers. How many of those are actually on duty at any, any given point?
Yeah. So what we have is, um, based on the foreign districts that we have, it's about three hundred and thirty-nine patrol officers. It varies district to district, how many we have working at a given time. But in total, that's what we have. On a daily basis, we have about fifty officers, um, in patrol that are out there patrolling the streets.
Okay, okay. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Um, then if you move to our community engagement, this kind of shows that we are more than just enforcing laws. Uh, in twenty-twenty-two, we went to seven hundred and forty-four organized community events. That doesn't just count the pop-up ones that we do on a daily basis. These are the organized events. That means that seventeen hundred of our officers are attending community events. So, but like I said, it goes to show that we're doing more than just enforcing laws. That is a very small fraction of what our officers do on a daily basis. They are very engaged in that community, and it's important because it allows the community to see our officers in a positive light and in a different light other than us just enforcing laws. So that is something that we are extremely proud of, and that's something that we expect everyone from the patrol officer all the way up to the chief of police to engage in every single day with our community. The one thing I want to talk about is our central records folks. These are our civilian staff. These are kind of our unsung heroes on our department. They are probably the most hardest-working, busiest people that we have on our agency is in the central records. Pointing out that in twenty-twenty-two, they had to respond to over thirty thousand PIA requests. And as you all are familiar with, we have a very short window, a thirty-day window to turn around and respond to anyone that puts in a PIA request. Um, so when you're talking about thirty thousand in one year, that's a lot. Just our nine-one-one audio recording requests, we averaged thirteen hundred requests a month, and we have one civilian staffer that handles all those requests alone. And as you can imagine, that's extremely time-consuming when it comes about audio recordings and having to redact certain information. The other thing that's not talked about a lot is our expungements, and our expungement laws, they change every year. Where more and more people, more and more offenses are being able to expunge their records. Just in twenty-twenty-two, we had over, almost close to thirty-seven hundred expungement orders brought into our central records. Expungements, for those of you who are not familiar with, this is legal mandates, uh, with strict, strict time constraints that if we are not met, um, that can cause a lot of discredit to our agency in addition to monetary fines. Not to mention, we would never want to release information that was supposed to be expunged. So we take that very seriously, and that has become very cumbersome on that, um, department. So far, we've had an eighteen percent increase in petitions just from twenty-twenty-two alone. The other thing I wanted to point out, since this is fairly new to our agency, our body worn cameras and the management that takes over on that, on a day, in twenty-twenty-two, we had five thousand seven hundred and sixty-five hundred seventy-six thousand body war, um, videos recorded just in one year. That's one hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and thirty-three hours of body worn recordings. That's also become quite cumbersome on that unit. Current staffing levels are inadequate to meet the needs of the body worn camera program, which was developed back in July of twenty-twenty-one. These records must be shared with the state's attorney's office quickly so we meet legal obligations of the rules of discovery. And we currently have a hundred and fifty case backlog on just that request alone. I can say it was fair when it first came into light in twenty-twenty-one, we're taking best guess of what it was going to take as far as personnel to help deliver those. Um, and we completely underestimated the amount of recordings that was going to develop. So, um, that's kind of where we are right now with the body worn cameras. And just to talk about the crime a little bit, there has been an increase in both our violent and property crime in twenty-twenty-two compared to twenty-twenty-one. So that kind of just gives you a little bit of a snapshot. I know there's a couple of new members. We just come on and put some of those numbers out there so you can see what we do annually and a daily basis. And with that, now I'd like to turn it over to our fiscal manager, Henry Farrell. Next slide, please.
Good morning. For the record, Henry Farrell, fiscal manager, police department. So, uh, you probably have before you a, a proposed budget book, somewhere in the neighborhood of ten or eleven pages for the police department. I'm going to attempt to, uh, summarize that for you in the next three slides here and give you some, uh, understanding for what happens with, uh, for all over two hundred million dollars. So this first slide is a pretty elementary pie chart. And as you can see, the largest, uh, slice of the pie here goes to paying, uh, twelve hundred and fifty-some, uh, employees. And so eighty-seven percent of, of our budget is just made up of paying folks to provide service. The next, uh, category breakdown would be contractual services at roughly ten percent. Uh, almost all of this money goes towards paying for, uh, fleet services, uh, provided by central services for lease and operating of all of our vehicles. Supplies and materials at three point nine, three point eight million dollars, uh, is made up of primarily items like ballistic vests, uniform, and ammunition costs. Uh, business and travel, uh, is made up of primarily training and associated costs. Uh, capital outlay, a bulk of that, I'll talk about these in a little more detail later, but a bulk of that goes, uh, to buying vehicles, radios, MDCs, et cetera, for new officers. And then confidential expenses, I'll get to that detail in a little bit as well. But that's basically paying subpoenas for phone investigations. Um, next slide, please. So the easiest way to look at the numbers and make some sense from one year to the next is talk about what has changed. So what we see here is that in, under personal services, we have a sixteen million dollar increase. Over fourteen million dollars of that is paying for the countywide pay packages for, uh, all the unions and non-representative employees. Uh, there's about one point nine eight dollars in new positions. Uh, there were six new civilians and thirteen new sworn officers. Um, this, the six civilian positions are three that are going to the central records, uh, division, as you heard Deputy Chief Roberts talk about the burden they faced with the new legislative items like, um, public information, ex body worn cameras, and expungements. We have one senior forensic examiner to help with the growing number of firearms cases and two animal control technicians in the, uh, animal care and control section. Um, under contractual services, there's a three point five million dollar increase. Um, that is all driven by basically fuel and operating and replacement costs of vehicles. You'll probably see that as a common theme, uh, from most of the departments you'll hear from over the next, uh, few days. Um, and I'm sure when central services, uh, comes before you, they can talk in a little more detail about those changes. Um, supplies and materials, there's a three hundred thousand dollar increase. Uh, and again, as mentioned before, ballistic vests, uniforms, ammo, animal food, just a few of the items that, uh, make up three point eight million dollars in supplies and materials. Uh, a small increase in our business and travel, which is primarily training and associated costs. There is a two million dollar decrease in our capital outlay this year, uh, that you can see one point six seven five million, which really is driven by new officer equipment, vehicles, MDCs, ballistic vests, et cetera. And a small increase in grants and contributions, uh, of thirty thousand dollars. And that really goes towards confidential expenses and paying phone subpoenas for investigative purposes. Uh, next slide, please. So you'll find this comparative statement expenditures on page two sixty-nine of your budget book. It's, it's an awful lot of information here on one page. Let, let me try to make some sense of it for you. Um, you see the same set of numbers broken down in three different ways, by fund, by character, or bureau, and by object. In our case in the police department, the, the character or bureau, uh, is not very helpful to analyze numbers from one year to the next. The reason is because we have officers who might work in patrol services, for example, and when their position becomes vacant, it gets moved into the admin services bureau where the training academy is. And so those numbers jump from year to year so drastically, it doesn't make sense to use them to analyze. Um, you are seeing it that way because the charter requires budgets to provide you that detail. Um, however, I'd like to talk about, uh, the fund and the object numbers. So up on the top of the page, you see that our department is made up of four different funds. Um, the general fund has an eighteen million dollar increase. Again, that's sixteen million dollar pay package stuff and some new positions. Uh, you see the forfeit and asset seizure fund, um, also known as the FAST fund. You see zeros in there for previous years, and that's primarily driven by the federal government shutting down the courts during COVID. Uh, we're now catching up, so we're going to take the burden off the general fund and fund something, uh, out of there. And we've got currently half million dollars in revenue this year, and we expect that to, to continue into the forthcoming years. The grant fund in the police department, uh, is made up of roughly forty grants at three million dollars, and you see a very small increase there at twenty-three thousand. And the last fund is the, uh, Video Lottery Terminal Fund, um, funded by the Local Development Council of three point six million dollars. You see an increase of a hundred thirty-eight thousand. They're going to fund some things over and above last year that are basically license plate reader, uh, information for us. So, um, we're grateful for that. Uh, let's move down to the object lines where we can talk a little bit about what's changed down there. So in the personal services line, you see the sixteen million dollar increase for pay packages again, um, of all the unions and non-reps, um, as well as the new positions at almost two million dollars. There is a four point four billion dollar increase in contractual services. Again, that's all fleet-related costs. Uh, supplies and materials at three hundred seventy-nine thousand dollar increase. Um, there's, you know, inflationary factors applied heavily on the supplies and materials categories. I would imagine you'll see that across the board in most departments, and that's primarily for us driven by the cost of training ammunition. In the business and travel line, we have a increase in our training costs this year, um, and associated travel, et cetera. Um, and then in the capital outlay line, you'll see a decrease of one point eight million dollars. And again, the thirty thousand dollar increase in the grants and contributions line uh, has to do with paying phone subpoenas for investigative purposes, confidential expenses. It kind of concludes our summary remarks of the operating budget. Uh, if there are no questions about that, I see a couple of hands raised.
Right, Mr. Volkey. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Um, thank you all for your presentation and being with us this morning. So a couple of questions on some of the new personal services that you haven't sort of misleading, it should be personnel service. I don't know, same difference. But the point is, um, with, with those costs, tell me a little about the new civilian positions. I see, you know, you, you're justifying that through an uptick in the number of body worn camera responses that you're having to do, the expungements, et cetera. And, and you all went through that, but I guess I don't remember putting this many new positions into the police department in any of the past four budgets that I've been involved with. So just talk to me about why this is necessary at this point in time and what this is going to do in terms of sort of your ability and what a lack of this will do to your ability, if that makes sense.
So when these, when the body worn camera program was established, we basically talked to our surrounding jurisdictions who have them and made, made an educated guess about how many people we would need to get the job done. We certainly underestimated that number. Um, we added similar positions like this last year. And now that the public is caught on to the fact that they can get their hands on some of this, the number of requests for this information are growing out of control. So basically, we can't keep up with the state law and the state mandates if we don't fill these positions. Uh, it's really a similar situation for the PIA's, body worn cameras, and the expungements are all state legislative mandates that we're trying to keep up with.
Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to continue in that same line of questioning. So, um, Deputy Chief Roberts, you mentioned that there is a one hundred and fifty case backlog, I believe you said, with regard to the body worn camera viewing. Are you still meeting the required, um, turnaround? I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yeah, we, we are. So we've had meetings with, uh, the state's attorney. So we are working on that backlog. She understands when you have one person that's in charge of doing that. We do the best we can. It is causing a little bit of delays with having to ask for posthumous with court, but we are working heavily on that backlog.
Okay, perfect. And, and if I may ask one more question, Mr. Chair? Okay, um, so if you can remind me, I, I know we have touched on this in previous budget meetings, but with the, our fleet of, um, police vehicles, what is the, um, replacement time period? Is it five years for all vehicles, or is it five years for some and a different timeframe for others?
So I'm going to give you a very close number because I don't know exactly what it is today. But it's generally a year, as in five years and a mileage. So some cars may have three and a half years but have a hundred and fifty thousand miles. Some cars may only have seventy thousand miles at six years. So it's a combination of the year, the mileage, and also a factor of how much money have you put into that vehicle thus far? Uh, let's say there's a vehicle that we feel that came off the manufacturing line, and we've just been funneling money into fixing the transmission and so forth. There, so they take that into consideration as well. Uh, and so it's a combination of those three things.
Okay, so there's not a standard, um, department policy that at five years, a car would, you know, move on to its life?
It, it's all driven by central services and the fleet administrator, to be honest. Yeah.
Okay, I'll save my additional questions for when they come before us. Thank you.
And I think I see Mrs. Hummer's hand up.
Um, yes, thank you all very much. Um, so you said that you all have seven hundred and eighty-four sworn officers at this time. What's your normal, um, I, I don't hate word, I don't mean to use the word attrition, but to, you know, turnover each year with retirements, resignations, et cetera?
So we generally lose about four to five officers a month to retirements and resignations. So somewhere in the neighborhood of the low fifties each year.
All right, thank you.
Okay. No other questions? Can we move on to the capital?
Yes, sir.
So if we can move to slide number eight, please.
Sorry, it's being a bit slow. Is this the right slide, guys?
Yes, that's, that's great. Thank you. So the only new project we have in the capital improvement program for FY twenty-four is a new northern district police station. Um, just a couple of images on this slide of, uh, you know, making closets into offices for detectives and the undersized locker rooms. Uh, next slide, please. A few more images there of how we have about nine sergeants sharing four desks, undersized, uh, kitchens with no sinks, et cetera. Um, this building was built in the seventies. It's been added on to twice in linear fashion. It's, when it's hot outside, it's hot inside, and same for when it's cold. Um, very small amount of money in the budget for FY twenty-four, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Um, very small amount of money in the budget for FY twenty-four, one hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars. Um. To study. Do we have enough space on this property to build another facility, or should we go somewhere else another county property or what we need to acquire land? So that's what the hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars could do for us there. Next slide, please. So we have four projects currently underway that I wanted to talk about briefly. The first being the police training academy. We have eight hundred and eight thousand dollars uh remaining in this project that's funded next year, which will complete a scenario based training barn for us. This this happens to be on page seventy-seven of your CIP book, by the way. Um, so that will wrap up the training academy project. Uh, the next on page seventy-eight is the evidence and forensic science unit. You can see that the four divisions that make up that that new evidence and forensic science unit project. Uh, there's one point eight million dollars added in FY twenty-four, and we're currently waiting on a grading permit to move forward with this project. The third project underway is the police special operations facility. You can see there some of the benefits that we'll acquire from this new building. It's on page eighty-three of your capital proof and program book. Um, and a little less than six million dollars in next year to uh to finish construction of this project. And again, much like the previous, we're waiting on a grading permit on this building as well to move forward. Uh, the fourth project, oh, next slide, please. And the fourth project underway here is the new firing range at our academy. That's on page ninety-one of your CIP book. Uh, there is no money pushed uh put into the FY twenty-four. It's been pushed out to twenty-five due to the um heavy technical nature of a structure like this. Uh, we won't be doing any construction until FY twenty-five. Uh, the prior money put into this project, two million dollars, is is beginning our design and engineering work. Um, I do want to mention one more project that we don't have a slide on because we don't have any money funded for this. The money is funded in uh central services facility renovation account. Uh, six hundred thousand dollars as well as nine hundred thousand in OIT's information technology enhancement project. And they are for the real time fusion center uh construction and hardware software cost to to begin getting that underway. Heard the chief mention that in her opening remarks. And that concludes our capital improvement program. So we're ready for questions. Should you have any?
I see Ms. Feedler's hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question on the evidence and forensics project. Um, you mentioned that you're just waiting on a grading permit. So can I assume that the design has not changed? I know that that was a topic of conversation at one point. Um, are we continuing with the original design for that project?
Yes, the design is is still moving forward as it was originally planned. Uh, I think we have tweaked some of the uh exterior surrounding in terms of um number of trees that would need to be removed or, you know, we're leaving more and we're planting more. And so other than that, the building structure itself still remains the same.
Great, thank you.
And Ms. uh Ms. Robbie.
Thank you. Um, I really just wanted to ask if there are um any items that you um had hoped would be um in the county executive's budget that you don't find there and that um you would like us to advocate for.
But we've had lengthy conversations about the number of officers. Uh, this is a step in the right direction. Um, I think we'll be standing before you in the next couple of years with larger numbers than this. But due to our inability to recruit and hire uh large classes, you know, this is a step in the right direction, and we'll and we'll get us what we can do with for next year.
If I may back up what Mr. Farrell just said, we are seeing um our neighboring jurisdictions and somewhat, you know, regionally of an increase in the volume, not just of applicants, but new hires. Um, so we anticipate that impacting us in the near future as well. And we do have a future meeting with the county executive to discuss our uh five-year staff plan.
Okay, so um additional officers would be the one thing, but it sounds like uh let us know if there is more detail to um, you know, that line of advocacy that uh you would like our support with.
Yes, ma'am. We certainly thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions for us?
I see Ms. Feedler saying again.
Yeah, this this is is just a comment. I just, while you all are here, want to thank you for your very open dialogue and communication with council members. I know you are probably just as responsive to my colleagues as you are to me and working in constituent issues and community concerns. Um, we're very lucky to have such a strong police department, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of you. We certainly enjoy the relationship that we share with this uh body. Um, we appreciate your support and respect, and uh obviously, we appreciate, you know, having the opportunity to present to you today. And uh we're looking forward to growing and um, you know, building our department, and we appreciate your support along the way.
Yeah, just one comment for me, I guess, for uh on the Capitol uh side of the house. Um. Just to be consistent, I know some of the projects, I'm in the fire capital program book. Uh, some have size of facilities, some don't, and maybe they're probably still in the early stages, but uh whatever we think might be the projected size of that facility, if they can add that to the description, uh, that'll be helpful, at least for me. Other than that, uh, oh, the chief, uh, we spoke about the uh police technology. And uh one of the things that uh in northern, at least in northern Anaronda County, uh certainly uh we have a lot of more interaction. You know, I look at those police summaries that come out each day. Uh, and every time it says Glenn Burney on there, like uh, but not a uh vice chair, there we we probably just, you know, sort of a clinch because we're like, ah, not again, right? Uh, or or Severn or the northern county and obviously the other counties as well. But uh I kind of keep track mentally on uh the number of uh those, at least in my district, incidents that occurred. So uh one of the things I've been always sort of promoting is is uh trying to enhance now, obviously, the police side of the houses. It's from the police officers is good. Uh, but I was trying to make sure we uh started to look at technology as a way uh to deter uh crime as well. And so one of the things I've been uh talking about at some of the community centers, or community meetings, I should say, is uh police cameras, uh safety cameras, if you will, uh in some of the uh jurisdictions up north. Is there any intent to uh enhance that for the the police department or uh identify uh, you know, cost models that, you know, what it might cost per per camera, if you will, uh so that, because police hiring police officers is such a long term in our process, and it takes like a year and a half really to to recruit and get them on the street where the camera I can buy tomorrow. And so uh any any thoughts there?
So this uh ties into our real time fusion center. If you want to touch on that. Um, there is a community engagement piece where we encourage um and quite frankly, ask for permission um from both members from the residential and commercial community to allow us access to their cameras to serve as a workforce multiplier when using this new um fusion center technology to get intelligence streamlined to us and then out into the field for our officers immediately when dealing with crimes that are in progress or even if in advance of crimes. So yes, it's certainly something that that we would support. And if you want to hear a little bit more about the real time fusion center, we could certainly talk about that.
Nope, nope, I'm good. I'm just going to keep it on the, I'm keeping it on the radar because um uh the squeaky wheel gets the oil is what I learned in politics. So.
Absolutely, sir. And it's just another resource, another tool in our chest, just like our surrounding partners use, you know, this technology to help um keep an eye on crime and also get officers, you know, to the scene either in advance of a crime occurring or while it's occurring, and we're there to assist victims like immediately.
Check. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, uh, I don't see any additional hands raised, but uh certainly uh uh value the police department and public safety in general. And so I thank each of you for uh giving us this information, and so we'll we'll go from here.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time, and we're very grateful for your consideration.
Yes, ma'am. So I think the next uh panel is the sheriff's office, I believe. Lauren?
Yes, I believe the sheriff is next. Mr. Trumpbauer Budget Team, is the sheriff's office ready to go?
Uh, I'm I'm not sure. We've been told a couple of different things about the order today, so.
Yeah, I understand that. Um, Mr. Chair, the circuit court is here. They're already have they already joined as a panelist? Would it be okay with the budget team and the council if we just jumped right to the circuit court and we can get the rest of this squared away?
That's good with us. If you can uh just promote Kyle into panelist, he's their analyst.
Kyle is coming in.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for your patience. Day one is is always a bit of a uh learning experience.
Especially following up after a twelve-hour day with lots of involved things and sounds like a long weekend. Meaning a busy weekend of preparation.
See if the circuit court's ready here. Circuit Court Team, are you ready just to address us?
Yes, we are whenever you're ready.
All right, Mr. Chair, back to you.
I'm sorry, uh, yeah, and there's also, I guess there's a Mary Bill uh who might be trying to uh get in as well. So after the circuit uh court, uh since they're already here, we'll queue up the the sheriff department. It was uh Everett, our Sheriff Sescer who just called.
Yeah, we'll get the order figured out here. I think we're ready to go.
Okay, uh, Kyle, uh, I think it's, is it over to you uh for the circuit court?
Yep, good morning, and thank you, counsel. Um, I'm the Kyle Madden. I'm the budget analyst for the circuit court. Um, their budget can be found on page three oh three of your budget book. And uh I will turn it over to the department to present their budget.
All right, good morning. Um, thank you for this opportunity to address you on behalf of the circuit court for Anaronda County. I'm Judge Donna Schaefer, the administrative judge for the court. And with me are Doug Hofstadt, our court administrator, and Kim Klein, our director of court operations. As you know, we have all been working through some very difficult years due to the pandemic. We have learned to do many things differently. Some of the new processes worked well and some did not. As we continue to evolve post pandemic, our court continues to handle some hearings remotely via Zoom. But most case types have returned to in-person proceedings at the courthouse. We are in our tenth year as an electronic courthouse utilizing the Maryland judiciary's electronic case management system known as MDEC. We were chosen as the pilot county for MDEC, which has now been implemented statewide with the exception of Baltimore City. During the pandemic, we were able to receive filings electronically and hold hearings telephonically and by Zoom to keep our dockets moving. We are one of the only courts in Maryland that has been able to eliminate the backlog in criminal cases, and we are striving to eliminate our family law and civil case backlogs by the end of this year. Last year at this time, we were awaiting the approval of a bill that increased the amount paid to county residents for jury service from fifteen dollars per day to thirty dollars per day. That bill was signed. However, it is important to note that the amount paid to our jurors is one hundred percent reimbursed to the county by the Maryland judiciary. With the county's support, we have been able to complete renovations on our second floor for an additional courtroom, which was just put into use last week. Within the next few months, additional renovations will be done to adapt spaces for larger juror assembly areas, a new home for our law library and self-help center, and we'll be adding another judges' chambers. Again, this year, we have worked closely with the budget office to submit a conservative budget request for fiscal year twenty twenty-four within the confines of the budget projection provided to us. Our overall budget submission also includes multiple grant business units for which we receive state funding for programs such as drug court, family services, alternative dispute resolution, and more. At this point, we're happy to answer any questions that council members may have.
So I have a question, uh, how many, how many cases do you process a year out of the circuit court?
I'll turn that over to Ms. Klein.
Um, so for twenty twenty-two, we almost doubled from twenty twenty-one. So we doubled. We have twenty-six thousand filings that we processed, new cases that were processed in our court last year in twenty twenty-two.
Is is that a significant change from, let's say, nineteen, well, pre-COVID?
Yes, still significant. So it is definitely higher than twenty nineteen. So twenty nineteen was about twenty-one thousand filings. So twenty twenty-two, it went up about five thousand more.
So on average, you're probably looking at two twenty twenty-one thousand new cases every year. Yes. In the ballpark.
Yes, uh, that's what we expect after COVID. Yes. So during COVID, it did go down, even though the clerk's office, we, like Judge Schaefer said, we are an electronic court, so a lot of the attorneys were still able to file new cases. However, it wasn't at the rate that we were pre-COVID.
And you have, uh, how many courtrooms? Is it what thirteen? How many uh courtrooms that are processing those cases in circuit court? How many judges?
It's thirteen courtrooms and six magistrate hearing rooms. Um, so now we have, we're we're down one judge uh because our administrative judge, former administrative judge, just retired. So we're we're down a judge at the moment, but we have a courtroom for every judge at the moment. So that's that's a good thing.
And and I don't mean, and and what's what's the typical uh, what's your busiest court? Like which um, I'm not a judge or or lawyer, for that matter. May have played one on TV, but I've never been one.
Yeah, Judge Schaefer can answer that. I'll just say that, you know, our criminal docket takes precedence, you know, when we have that uh going, and then from there, we spread out to the other if it's a jury trial. Uh, but many of them are judge trials, so no jury is involved. So do you want to add anything to that?
Well, and I mean, family law cases are always court trials and not jury trials, and they're a very, very large uh percentage of our caseload.
Okay, no, and the reason I bring it up is because oftentimes, uh, when it comes to, at least certainly me as an elected official, um, you know, they talk, you know, citizens and constituents always talk about uh crime, and they talk about police piece of it. Uh, but what I think a lot of folks miss is is the the uh public safety or criminal justice system is a system, and from from the police interaction to the judge's sentencing, if you will. And so uh trying to see how we can, as we increase more police officers, because we're certainly uh interested in doing that, what do we need to do on the judicial side of the house to ensure that crimes that are committed uh or or violations uh here in the county? Is there anything we as a as a body uh on the council can do to enhance what you're doing uh so that it continues to either be more efficient? So that it's not taking, you know, months and months and months uh to process a case. Uh, and so that that's kind of where I was trying to figure out what we could do to really enhance that detail of the criminal justice system, which you guys are.
And we appreciate your support on that. Um, and 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 as we indicated, with our criminal cases, there are constitutional requirements that they have to be processed within a certain time period. So um that is is always our priority. Uh, and that's why, uh, as a result of COVID, uh, some of our civil and family law cases have have more of a backlog, but we are totally up to date and very efficient in processing our criminal cases.
Check. Can I add, Mr. Chair, that we are in line to get a a fourteenth judge for the courthouse. Uh, during COVID, the statistics went down, so they delayed that. So that's one thing that we'll be coming to you for support of, that the state will pay for that new judge um and their locker, but the county uh has to pay for the administrative assistant for that person. So that's something that when we come back to you, it's probably going to be here from now. Uh, that's my estimation. Um, but that's something we will be coming back to you with.
Check. Okay, I I see Mr. Volkey's hand is up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning.
Quick question for you about the new paralegal position that is listed in the exempt positions. Can you tell me what the purpose of that paralegal position is and what you expect to use them for in terms of what they're gonna do in the courthouse?
Right, so I can handle that. So there there were, we made two supplemental requests this year. One was, I I think they're both listed on your book as paralegals. Um, this is a jury office clerk that we are adding to, uh, we actually added with a CARES Act funding two years ago. And because of the numbers and the numbers of jurors and even the redundancy of staff that's needed to avoid problems if if we were to go into another COVID situation, uh, we're taking a two-person office to a three-person office. Uh, that person is already in place. We're just asking uh the county to fund that full-time so that we can continue on with with that position once the CARES Act funding is gone, which is this year, so. And the other paralegal position is a senior judge paralegal that helps all of our senior judges. Um, we had made a request to make that a full-time position this year. Uh, that was not um not carried forward, so that's, that position is gonna remain a contract position.
Mr. Chair. You're muted.
I'm sorry, your hand's still up. You you got another question?
I do, thank you. Okay, uh, I'm gonna switch gears for a second. I know that you're not exactly the Capitol Budget folks, but it is happening in your courthouse. So there is the Circuit Courthouse major renovation that I know is happening. Can you just tell me just status-wise how that's impacting your operations, how you're doing with that, how it's progressing, et cetera? I'd rather ask you than Central Services when they're here.
But we hope we ask them to, because they've been a great supportive uh organization for us. Right now, if you're down here, you can see that we're constructing, uh, uh, you know, um, what's the word? Yeah, the scaffolding in the front of our building to re- to renovate the slate ceiling, uh, roof, the cupola and all those things. That's a cosmetic repair, but it's needed to be done because we've had some issues with slate falling off that roof. And so if you come by Atrip Circle, you're gonna see this massive scaffolding. Um, they're also working on infrastructure like our air handlers. Um, it's supposed to include a renovation of the sheriff's uh holding cell. So there's a lot of different pieces to that project. Um, it's bigger than than just us and it's not in our budget. So uh, but it is absolutely essential. You know, this building is now gonna be twenty years old and some of these systems have never been upgraded. So that's what we're trying to do through the Capitol Project.
Thank you for stepping out of your wheelhouse to answer that.
Is there, are there any uh additional questions? Right, seeing no hands, uh, and there, I don't believe you guys have any Capitol programs. Uh, yeah, so thank you all for uh the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, well, I'm looking forward to enhancing that tail uh for the criminal justice system, so I'm I'm all about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, Laura, I think the Sheriff's uh is queued up, Department, which is probably right timing on this one. Good transition.
We, I've, uh, I'm trying to bring the Sheriff's Office in here just so that everyone is on the same page. We're gonna return to the order that's on the agenda. So it'll be Sheriff, then we'll go to Detention, then Emergency Management, Social Services, State's Attorney, Orphans Court, Board of Elections, and rounding out the morning with uh the Liquor Board, if we affectionately call them.
How fitting that the Liquor Board is last. Think we all need a drink at the end of this.
Do we have a coffee board?
We're gonna leave that.
All right, I am trying to promote the Sheriff's Office. So Sheriff's Office, if you are seeing some sort of a prompt, you need to accept it.
And I think there's also a Mary he mentioned, who was a.
Here we are. I renamed uh Mary Bell as Sheriff's Office. Yeah.
More appropriate.
Okay, I see the Sheriff's Office. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Mr. Chair, sir, uh, welcome aboard. Can you, can you hear us? All right, we're gonna uh go ahead and turn it over to you and uh give us a a brief on the Sheriff Operations.
Sheriff, do you all have separate audio and video here? I have also enabled the other Sheriff's Office here so that you can talk. You just need to accept the prompt.
Can you hear me?
We can now, yes.
Okay, great, great. Thank you. How's everybody?
Doing well.
Good, good, good. Good morning. Thank you. We had a little bit of technical difficulty getting here, but we are here now. Um, let me uh introduce my personnel with me. I have uh two right here, Colonel James Williams. And then we have um Christina Smith. She's in charge of our uh Human Resources. We have a Captain Andre right here. Uh, he's Commander of our Field Operations Bureau. And then we have Mary Bell. She is our finance person.
Good morning.
Morning.
So if we start, I guess, with uh page three twelve, and I'm gonna skip through this pretty much because in in essence of time, uh, we were given, awarded a captain's position. But actually, it's not an increase to our budgeting because we had to reclassify a deputy position to get the captain's position. We were also allotted uh thirteen additional vehicles. Uh, the thirteen additional vehicles will go a long way, but we still need additional vehicles to outfit our entire agency. Um, we also was awarded uh funding for a X-ray machine. Um, when each of you did the visit to the courthouse, we explained to you about the X-ray machine, how it was down, so we was awarded the funding for that. Um, I'm gonna get right to the point. When I ran for sheriff, um, I knew there was some um uh things going on in the Sheriff's Office, some needs and things like that. But I'll be quite honest with you, in uh in the course of being transparent, uh, the Sheriff's Office has many needs, many needs that need to be met. Um, your previous presenters, the Police Department, uh, the the Courts, um, and even the um State's Attorney's Office. We are basically customers of each of those agencies. And we're not able to keep up. Uh, the county police right now, they have approximately seven hundred and some personnel. We have a total of eighty-six sworn personnel. I'm I'm sorry, we have a total of seventy-eight sworn personnel, and that includes myself in the Colonel. If we are to be effective, we have to keep up with the county police. It is my belief, my professional belief, that we should have for every one hundred officers, we need to have twenty deputies to keep up. We need to be at a staffing level right now at about a hundred and fifty. If you go to page three fourteen, and I, I'm gonna turn this part over to the captain right here. And what he will talk about is the numbers that come in for civil process and the actual number of people that we have to uh execute that. Okay?
So, uh, Brian Andre, Captain with the Sheriff's Office. Um, we average, just to give you some examples of numbers, uh, we get eight hundred warrants a month. They do appear violation of probation, arrest warrants. Um, and uh, we end up serving between us and the county police, state police, other agencies, roughly five hundred. So as you can see, we're down three hundred warrants every month. A total of thirteen thousand five hundred outstanding warrants, which we want to reduce. But with seven deputies full-time, fourteen, uh, seven on each team serving warrants, uh, we're not getting ahead. Another area that's growing and growing is uh paid to pay rent notices. Uh, we used to average about fifteen, sixteen hundred a month. That's growing to nineteen hundred, two thousand a month, spread between eleven deputies and a sergeant. What those paid-to-pay rent notices uh turn into are evictions, warrants restitution, which definitely dropped off during COVID with the eviction we're touring. But has steadily increased back to pre-COVID numbers where we are doing seven to eight hundred evictions a month. Now, those aren't live evictions, probably averaging eighty to a hundred. But we still process eight hundred evictions a month, meaning we have to verify with landlords that a person pays, they've moved, turned over the keys. Um, so as you can imagine, the deputies, especially in the North End, Glavernic, Brooklyn, um, some areas of seven, uh, and Laurel have high volumes and a very large workload to process these increasing numbers of landlord tenant affairs coming from the court.
And let me, let me skip a little bit. I just wanna add something in here. Everything that we do is not optional. It's court order. We, we have to execute all of these warrants. Any uh civil uh paperwork that comes through is court order. It is required of us.
Uh, another area that's growing, um, that it really did not slow during COVID is we have, we have to serve criminal summonses, um, you know, judge or commissioner, commission warrants, or criminal summonses. We average about four thousand a year um throughout the county. We do uh all the domestic violence works, certain protective orders, peace orders, um, burpos issued by um citizens and doctors of, um, you know, three thousand a month or a year of of those type of documents. Again, those numbers are steadily growing, um, and our our staffing is not, um, growing with it. Uh, another area is child support. We serve all the child support summonses and warrants throughout Maryland County. And we're the law enforcement arm and the judicial branch. So as the Circuit Court before us, when the court grows and those court cases grow, we get all the paperwork associated with that. And we're not growing at a corresponding rate to the court cases. So all of your subpoenas, your witness summonses, um, all of those come to us. They have to be served. And all of those are time-sensitive to help the court maintain its efficiency. We've done an outstanding job over the years. I've been here for eighteen. And we are uh assisting the court and maintaining their efficiency. Get people to court, make sure the cases go where they're supposed to go, and those documents, particularly when you grow and grow and grow. Those are just some of the areas of the Sheriff's Office is responsible.
Let me, I'll give you a better understanding of the growth of the Sheriff's Office. Um, since from, for the county police from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-three, if you approve their current budget, they will have increased by eighty-six sworn personnel. So that's from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-three, eighty-six sworn personnel. From budget year two thousand to two thousand twenty-three, the Sheriff's Office has increased by nineteen. So twenty-three years, we've increased by nineteen. And in the last two administrations, they've increased by eighty-six. We have to keep pace with them because the more officers you put on the street, that's the more criminal summonses that are out there, that's the more uh subpoenas that are out there for court cases. We are not keeping up. I also like to stress that it's not just about keeping up, it's also a uh officer safety thing from this standpoint. I will tell you that I'm extremely surprised that we have not had a lot of death duty. Um, and I I say that because we are sending officers out to arrest felons, serious people, and we are always short-staffed. We have people down in our lockup. We have hundreds, what you've seen, we have thousands of people come through our lockup each year. You know, we may have twenty to thirty people in lockup, but we only have six people down there. Now, I've gotten off course a little bit with this. I I went through what we were approved for, and I'm jumping right into, we need more personnel. You know, and I'm doing that because when I saw the county police, they're getting an additional twelve, I think twelve people this year. And I look at the uh Fire Department, I think they're getting an additional seventeen or eighteen people. And I applaud them for everything that they did, but we have to keep up. See, I was under the belief that there was gonna be no additional personnel coming on this year for anywhere across the county. So I did not put that in my budget. Now, I'm telling you, this is what we need. I am looking for command staff first. The three of us right here, the ones in the white shirts, this is the executive command staff for the entire um Sheriff's Office. This is it. This is the brain trust. We run everything. Every decision comes from this group right here. I need a command staff that can actually uh keep up with the demands of this agency. So in addition to the one captain that I am getting, that I had to reclassify and strip away from the 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 rankings filed to get, I am asking for a total of two captains. And I'm asking for a major. A lieutenant and a sergeant. That will provide me with an, the appropriate, the appropriate command staff for each bureau. A captain and a lieutenant over each bureau, my three bureaus. And this is something that the community demands. We see it all the time. You know, Memphis, you know, misconduct. We don't have the adequate personnel to even oversee this agency. I am looking to start a uh Office of Professional uh Responsibility, which most people identify as Internal Affairs. I would love to have a major over that, an appointed position over that. Because I need my major to be of a rank that he can uh submit orders down the chain to actually handle proper investigations. Then I wanna have it two-sided. You have one side over here that actually does investigations, which will be the lieutenant. He'll handle investigation, the external complaints that come in, internal complaints that come in. He will be a working, he or she will be a working lieutenant. And on the other side, I will have a sergeant. The sergeant will be a working sergeant. That sergeant will be proactive. He will be, he or she will be the one that will review all uh body worn camera footage, not including just when the incident occurs, but on a random basis. We need officers, uh, somebody to review footage on a random basis. And I say that because in Memphis, the incident that occurred there, that's not the first time. But if they had somebody reviewing the body footage, uh, camera footage, they probably could have uh prevented uh this last incident from occurring. These are not wants for me, these are needs. Because when we talk about a storm, this Sheriff's Office is the perfect storm. It's the perfect storm and it's more, it's not wind, you know, it's not if, it's when. Something.
Sir, I uh, I'm gonna squeeze it and get uh Ms. uh Ms. Pickard in here. I see her hand raised. She had a question for you?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good morning uh to my sheriff friends. Um, I just had a couple of questions about the numbers you're quoting, because it's, you know, one of the challenges in in we're seeing in in the county workforce is recruitment. Um, and I, I know, I noticed you have a hundred and sixteen pins. Uh, I wanted to ask you about vacancy rates. Um, because I, you know, doing quick math, you know, it does seem like the Sheriff's Office has has certainly grown in proportion to the police over the years. But I know we're struggling with vacancy rates in all of our public servant, public safety agencies. Can you tell us a little bit about your vacancies right now?
Sure. And, you know, the hundred and sixteen pins, you have to back that out for civilians. Civilians perform a vital function here. We're also uh uh a little low on civilian positions. So right now, we have a total of twenty-three civilians. And we have a total of nine vacancies, which we are actively trying to fill at this moment. Um, we have sixty-eight sworn. And you have to back out the Colonel and myself, if you wanna back that out, but I give you sixty-eight. And we have a total of seventeen vacant positions. So when you say that we've been keeping up with the county police, we have not been keeping up with the county police. We are far below. Look, I have been in positions. I have been in positions within, uh, large law enforcement agencies, uh, Prince George's County. I have served as the executive director of the Maryland Police Training and Standards Commission. And my responsibility there was to oversee certification for all officers in the state. And the deputies here, just like the county police, require the same certification. There is no difference, you know? Um, it is in my professional opinion that for every hundred police officers, we need twenty deputies. Um, Chairman Smith asked me, where would, should we be at right now? You know, if we were fully staffed. And I put that at right around one hundred and fifty deputies. To go from two thousand to two thousand twenty-three and only increase your staffing by nineteen, that's not keeping up. The county police has grown significantly. The county has grown significantly. From two thousand to two thousand, uh, twenty-one, the county has increased by about a hundred thousand people. You know, that's people going to the courts, going to the court commissioner's office, uh, seeking, uh, um, seeking something from the courts, whether it be in the form of a domestic violence order, something like that. It is our responsibility to serve all of this. We don't have an option like other law enforcement agencies like the county police. We don't have professional discretion to say, no, we're not going to lock this person up. No, we're not going to give us this ticket, this citation. We have to execute. We have to execute everything that we
If, if I may, if I may, um, the, the interrupt, and I, I apologize because I do believe my colleague in District Three has his hand raised as well. But the, the question I asked was really about, you know, if we have vacancies, if we have sworn officers and they're vacant, how many recruits do you expect to be able to bring online this year through training academies to fill the vacancies? I, I know we're asking our other public safety agencies to acknowledge that we have, we have vacancies, which is why they're a little disappointed with their additional sworn officers as well. So how many sworn officer vacancy, uh, sheriff's deputies do you have currently? I mean, we, that you need to fill this year and through recruitment?
Okay, we have a total of seventeen. But my agency is different than other agencies because our salary is lower. We get a number of, of our new deputies from retiring. They're retiring from other agencies. So we don't see the twenty years that, you know, like in the county police they'll put in. They may put in anywhere between five and ten years. But we are actively, I am actively recruiting people. And I will let Christina talk about the number of people we have in process right now that are, will be joining the sheriff's office.
Good morning. Uh, so we currently have, um, two, uh, recruits in the, in our county police academy. Um, they have joined us as entry level recruits. So they have about nine months in that academy before they will officially be with us. Um, and actually be able to count towards our numbers, um, for staffing. And we also have a gentleman who's coming to us as a lateral deputy in two weeks. We have, um, six other people in our background process for lateral deputies. And we have a few still in the ESOL program, which is the background program that we use. They haven't officially made it into background yet. They're still kind of in the review phase. Um, but we will be holding entry level testing again in the coming weeks for the academy that's slated for November. And, uh, we're hoping that through this year, we are going to fill all vacancies. We absolutely have that goal. And we are on track with our current people in background to meet that goal.
And let me, let me add this.
And if you, if you can also add, add that, uh, your attrition rate, I noticed, uh, it was asked about the police department that goes about fifty-ish uh, a year through attrition. Uh, what, what, what do you all, as you're growing, what are you losing at the same time?
I, I will say this, since, since I have been here, um, since December, we have lost, uh, two sworn personnel. And then we have probably about another three that can retire at some point if they choose to do so. So, and, and let me add this in here. I, I know Chief Amal said that, uh, uh, recruiting is increasing and things like that. Well, we are doing a, uh, a great job of trying to bring in more personnel. We're, we're doing more job fairs and things like that, so that is helping. But what these other agencies have that we don't have, of course, is the salary. But the second part is they have a twenty thousand dollar signing bonus. So when you go after a young person and they have over here a twenty thousand dollar signing bonus, a higher salary, and you have over here no signing bonus and a lower salary. Yeah, it makes it difficult for us to recruit. So that's why you see more people who are retirees coming to us.
I see Mr. Voki's hand up, uh, let him come in here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sheriff, one of the things you said is that you were told there would be no additional personnel in any part of the budget. I think that was the statement you made. I wrote it down. Uh, who told you that? Where did you hear that? I'm just curious because that's obviously not been the case in the budget that we were presented. So I'm just curious. I, I want to try to get the facts straight on who was told what when.
Well, I, I tell you what, Councilman Voki, I, I've spoken to many people about the budget. I cannot put a, uh, a name to that, to that. But I can say that, you know, once I'm sitting here and I had the opportunity yesterday to, uh, go over the presentation by the county executive and I see all of these additional perp personnel to the fire department, the, uh, police department, you know, we are a part of public safety. As a matter of fact, we play a very vital role. Because I don't care how many police you have. You can put a thousand police officers out there, but it's all for naught because we are the ones that actually serve the warrants. The warrants that they apply for. We are the ones that ensure that the subpoenas go out so the witnesses can show up for court.
Yeah, I'm, I'm tracking with you on all that. I guess my, my question, just as simple as it can be, is at some point in time, someone relayed to your office something different than what they relayed to other folks who put in for positions and got them. And clearly something was relayed to you to say, don't ask for these positions because there are not going to be any new positions. And I just want to understand who said it.
Yes, true.
Where that came from.
And believe me, I would love to be able to say, you know, put a, a name with someone, uh, a name with that. But like I said, I've talked to a number of people, so I can't do that. But what I will say is this is an opportunity to, to correct it. Now, and I, I went in talking about my command staff, what I need. And I believe it's fiscally responsible or, or as a manager. I, I will attempt to fill these vacancies first. But I need to get the infrastructure in place before that, before I start getting additional people. And right now I need adequate, proper supervision. You know, I need the commanders that, you know, I, I, I explained to you. I need this office of professional standards. I need it because in today's time, you know, we cannot have sworn personnel going out on the street. You know, and conducting business without being proactive. We need people to oversee that. We need people to contact, you know, when deputies come in contact with someone, whether it be on an eviction or warrant service, there should be somebody following up to ensure that the deputies did what they're supposed to do. Because if we don't have that, you know, it will happen. What happened in Memphis, it will happen. It will happen here right in Annapolis County. Now, my Colonel here, he can attest to it because I brought him on for many reasons. But one of the big reasons is he was the commander of the cert team for Prince George's County. The cert team investigated all serious incidents involving police officers. Police officer involved shootings, um, use of force, anything like that. And he will tell you, he agrees with you. Right now, this is a perfect storm. It's a perfect storm waiting to happen.
Are there, are there any, uh, additional questions, uh, from any of the councilmen?
I, I'm going to keep following up. I just, I, I try to understand. Was there somebody in the budget office or was it the administration?
Yeah, uh, Councilman Voki, I, I, I truly appreciate your, your staying on that. But I am the person that I believe that unless I can say definitively it was this person, you know, I'm in law enforcement. I have to be sure of who said. So right now, I can tell you that we were guided in a direction that we were not going to ask for additional personnel. So working, working with the county, I agree, but right now it's a different scenario. I'm telling you exactly what we need. We need, we need these people. It's not a want, it is a definite need. Because like I said, this is a perfect storm. And let me say this before we wrap up. It will come down to this. You know, we are providing services for the county that are not our responsibility. You know, we are responsible for the circuit court, not, not the district court. And right now, approximately eighty to eighty-five percent of our warrants that we receive, that we process, that our civilians handle, is the responsibility of the county police. At some point, the sheriff decided we would take it on. Well, I am telling you that we have to work together on this to resolve this issue. This is an issue that you guys know nothing about. I can't talk about the previous sheriffs. Why you don't know? But I'm telling you right now, so you are aware that this is a serious issue. And we may have to give those, uh, circuit court warrants back to the county police. That means they will have to serve them. That means we will deliver files to the county police. They will have to store them. That means that when anybody calls anywhere in this country, the call will go to the county police to see if that warrant is still active. We do all of that right now. I like
Quick question. I must, must, I see, Mr., uh, before I go to Madam Vice Chair, Mr. Trumpauer, just to sort of, uh, address, uh, Mr. Avoki's question. Have you, uh, heard, uh, of any indication that the sheriff's officers, sheriff's office, uh, received guidance, uh, you know, as far as manning, man purposes, manpower purposes, uh, to not sort of look for that, uh, growth?
So, uh, Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer for the record. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, hello Sheriff and your team. Uh, so throughout the budget process, uh, my office, uh, through either myself or, uh, what we call the CAO letter, um, we provide guidance to departmental directors to give them our preliminary, um, view of the fiscal situation. And so the guidance that was sent out this year, uh, I'm going to paraphrase a bit for you, Mr. Chair, but it was basically, uh, this year ain't like last year. Um, so, uh, please be aware that the county fiscal situation is much tighter. And, uh, we ask departments, uh, to please keep that in mind, uh, when they, um, do their departmental reviews, uh, with the county executives. Uh, so that absolutely was guidance that came from my office. I can't speak to the specifics of what, um, Sheriff Esker is, is referring to in his specific situation. Uh, but I can tell you that general guidance, uh, was given to departments, uh, with, with that flavor.
Uh, Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you. Getting back to finding the mute button. Um, I just want to, I, I just, I, I understand everything you're saying, uh, uh, Sheriff Suesker. I just want to make sure that in working with our public safety agencies, we're setting you up for success for recruitment. So with additional, I know we have additional vehicles for the sheriff's office in the budget, which is always a help, uh, to rec, to recruitment. But, um, as you mentioned, other, um, incentive bonus packages, signing bonus for other public safety agencies. That may be something that you might want to consider, um, in your recruitment package, um, so that we can fill those seventeen vacancies and move forward, um, like the other public safety agencies with a, with a five-year staffing plan. So we can build the team that you need. Um, but first we, every agency has to start with their vacancies, for sure.
And, and, uh, Councilwoman, again, I, I really appreciate what you're saying and, and we would love to be able to give a twenty thousand dollar signing bonus, a fifteen thousand, something to help us. And just like you said, each agency has to start with their vacancies. The county police, they have, uh, a number of vacancies. I want to say it's like twenty-some vacancies. But they're also getting additional personnel on top of the twenty-some vacancies. You know, we are being, we are being, uh, what's the word? I'm looking, well, I guess the neglected, neglected here. You know, we are actively recruiting people. I am actively, everybody that we have recruited, I have invited to this office and they have come. I have personally sat down with them to tell them the benefits and all the great things that are going on here in the sheriff's office. I probably can guarantee you that none of the other agency heads have done that. I'm taking an active role in this. I want to make sure we get people in the door. You know, the two, the, the two, uh, students that we have in the academy right now. I personally went to lunch with them to, to tell them that we appreciate them being here. You know, we are actively doing everything that we can to fill these vacancies. That's why I said I need the command staff, you know, first. Because these vacancies that, that we have, we're going to fill them, but we're going to need additional personnel. But I need to get my command staff in place because next year, next fiscal year, I will be coming back to ask for additional personnel. Uh, to, uh, to, uh, meet the needs of the community to get us up to that staffing level where we should be, probably about one fifty. And we can go on and talk about the civilians. Civilians have not kept up. Civilians should be at least a, a third of the sworn personnel that we have here. We're not there either. And I could only identify six civilians that we've increased by in the last, um, twenty, twenty, twenty-three years. Six civilians.
Any additional comments, uh, for the sheriff? All right, uh, seeing no hands raised, uh, look forward to, uh, figuring something out, a solution here, uh, as we go through this budget process. Uh, still grateful for the, the, the court work, uh, support that you provide, uh, you know, the various customers that you, uh, provide services to. And so, uh, we'll certainly do our homework here and, uh, and, and get back with you in the, in the coming weeks. So, uh, any other, if no other questions, we're going to move to the detention facility. Brief.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And I see, um, where's, is Chris Klein?
I'm, I'm here.
Oh, okay, there you are, right there. I got a cool name.
On your grid, but, uh, in the group.
I know I got like, you should see my little home office here. I got like, uh, I'm certainly an IT geek because I got a whole bunch of different screens up. Um, uh, so, uh, welcome. Uh, it is our intent to sort of, uh, have you walk through your budget and give us, uh, sort of the highlights and, and what's important to you and what we can do to potentially help, uh, you be successful at, uh, executing the detention facility's, uh, mission.
I absolutely appreciate that. And I think, uh, Beau, our analyst, uh, was going to, uh, open up real quick, um, to start out.
Sure. Good morning. My name is Bo Zhao. I'm the Budget Analyst for the Department of Detention Facilities. Their budget begins on page two hundred eighty-six of the FY twenty-four proposed to budget book. Uh, with that, I'm, I'm going to turn it over to the Superintendent for the department's remarks and presentation.
Okay, thank you, Beau. And, uh, Pat, can you start the presentation? All right. Uh, so thank you very much. Good morning, uh, Chairman Smith and members of the county council. I'm Christopher Klein, this Superintendent of the Department of Detention Facilities. And I'm honored to appear before you today to present our FY twenty-four operating and capital budget for the Department of Detention Facilities. I'd first like to begin by, um, introducing my executive staff, or at least some of my executive staff who are here with me today online. Um, first is Correctional Facility Administrator Michael Borjesa. Second is Correctional Facility Administrator John Kelson. And third is our Correctional Support Services Manager Patricia Moore. Um, in, in front of this body, I'd like to personally thank them for their continued hard work and dedication to the department. Um, they're, they're definitely my, uh, you know, closest, uh, you know, team members. And, and I'm, I'm really appreciative for all of their efforts, um, since I've been here with the county. Um, I'd also like to thank Beau, um, for his partnership as our, our new analyst. Um, you know, this, uh, last year, when he came on board, he actually came out to our facilities um, to get a better understanding of, of how we operate and, and what's behind some of the requests that we make. Um, you know, through the budget process. I, I thank him for his, uh, support through the, through the process this year. Um, as a brief overview of the department, um, and I, and I'll keep it very brief. Um, we consist of three facilities. Um, each of Um each of those facilities have a specific function um as, as part of the overall correctional system. Um two of the facilities, the Jennifer Road Detention Center and the Central Holding Processing Center are um connected and both of those are located in Annapolis. And then the Ordnance Road Correctional Center uh is located in Glen Burnie. As we get further into our presentation, um I'll cover these areas just in a little more detail to give you some, some context about how these facilities operate. Um I, I find it very fitting um that every year since working for the county that um I'm able to present our budget in front of the county um right around National Correctional Officers Appreciation Week, um which is the first week uh in May as declared by the late President Reagan in nineteen eighty-four. The important work that correctional officers do um often doesn't receive the recognition that it, it deserves from the public. Our department is filled with amazing staff who tirelessly work behind the bars and walls and fences of our secure facilities that truly deserve to be recognized for all of their outstanding work. This budget goes to supporting the great work of the department and it allows us to achieve our mission. So on behalf of all staff at the Department of Detention Facilities, I'd like to thank the County Council Members, the County Executive and his office for the continued support of our department as we strive to fulfill our mission to provide for public safety through the confinement of pre-trial detainees and convicted offenders in safe and secure facilities while maintaining alternatives to incarceration and preparing inmates for community reentry. In preparation of this year's budget, we focused on looking forward and submitting a conservative budget that addresses the needs of our department and that's sustainable into the future. With that in mind, our budget request focused on the areas of maintaining safe operations, secure facilities, and providing essential programs for offenders as well as providing services. For F Y twenty-three, I'd like to highlight a couple of the major accomplishments this past fiscal year. With a focus on leveraging technology under the leadership of our newly hired I T manager, we incorporated a new screening assessment for victimization and predation into our offender management's system. We automated the training unit through the use of tablets and we implemented new software to track and monitor materials and supplies. Second, I'd like to highlight that our department implemented an Equity and Diversity and Inclusion Committee to align with the County Executive's Order Fifty. The work that has been done under this committee to foster an environment for our staff, arrestees, our community partners that heightens awareness and builds a sense of belonging and promotes equity through our policies, services and activities is something that we are all proud of. For F Y twenty-four, I'd like to highlight just three of our key objectives. First of all, improving vacancy rates for the department, which I've seen this morning is obviously a topic of discussion. The challenge of hiring staff for the department continues to be a top priority for my staff and everybody in the department. Our department currently has an eighteen percent vacancy rate for all staff. In calendar year twenty-three, we've been able to hire fifteen detention officers so far. However, these numbers are just keeping up with the pace of attrition. We do believe that adjustments we have made to our processes are having an impact and we're hopeful that our new campaign with W M A R, which just started in February, will help get us ahead of the curve. We continue to, we continue to work collaboratively with our bargaining units and explore options and methods to minimize the impact of these shortages. And I wanna thank them for their continued support as well. Second, I'd like to highlight the results of the Ordnance Road Correctional Center repurposing study. Um that, that uh report supported utilizing our space to establish a reentry hub that will help prevent the ongoing cycle of incarceration by providing comprehensive services and resources to our returning citizens and individuals supervised on pre-trial and house arrest. This is something that Councilwoman Rodbyan got to experience firsthand last Friday, and I appreciate her attendance at the Ordnance Road Correctional Center. We are actively building partnerships to assist in this initiative and programs and partners such as the Community Action Agencies Turnaround Thursday and Success in Style are excited to see this initiative come to fruition. Third is our medication assisted treatment. Medication Assisted Treatment, or M A T, became the law effective January of two thousand twenty-three. While the department was a little ahead of the curve in relation to other local facilities throughout the state, I'm happy to report that we are now fully compliant at the Ordnance Road Correctional Center and we are expected to be fully compliant in May at the Jennifer Road Detention Center. Delays in the grand award and acquiring the mobile van have been the holdup for the compliance with Jennifer Road. The program at Jennifer Road will provide a M A T solution with built-in continuity to the community, thus allowing for better transition for our returning citizens. We continue to meet with our medical partners and the Department of Health to establish workflows and processes to ensure the success of this program. We're also taking advantage of technical assistance that was provided through the state with a company called Health Management Associates. Our partnership with the Department of Health has also led to us agreeing to house Narcan vending machines in both of our facility lobbies so that individuals leaving our custody have access to this vital medication as well as anybody entering our facilities that either has S U D or are living with family members dealing with S U D can also access this medication. As we look towards the future, we recognize that we need some structural changes and additions in our staffing. With this budget, we're requesting the reclassification of sixteen detention officer positions to the classification of corporal. This move will open, open up promotional opportunities for our existing staff, which will help with recruitment, retention and succession planning. As we balance the ratio of corporals to sergeants, this uh correction will help us correct an issue that came about when we opened up the Central Processing Holding Center in two thousand twenty. This opportunity to provide these positions will help provide motivated staff the ability to gain experience as lead workers as they work towards achieving leadership positions throughout the department. Just in a snapshot, in the next five years, we are anticipating having to promote eight new sergeants, which is twenty-five percent of our sergeants from the rank of corporal. So the time to increase this pool of qualified candidates is now. As the County Executive stated yesterday in his address, we are fully committed, we're fully committing to reentry by creating a new full-time reentry coordinator position, which is a program specialist too. As we have discussed and being consistent with our capital request, the investment in a new reentry coordinator position for the department will solidify our commitment to reentry and providing reentry services and resources to the returning citizens in our county. As we work towards providing comprehensive reentry services, it is critical for us to have a dedicated, passionate person working in this capacity who can deliver on making sure these individual needs are addressed. Our third staffing adjustment is for a mental health intake clinician position. The request for this position would greatly help our department in the identification and stabilization of our most vulnerable population. In my opinion, the system of care for the justice-involved mental health population in the state is currently broken and is causing significant stresses on the local detention systems. We are experiencing major delays in getting court-ordered individuals to be accepted to the Maryland Department of Health and have seen recent cases take six times the legal allowable limit for time of admission. In two cases this past year, M D H was held in contempt for failing to comply with these orders incurring roughly eighty thousand dollars in assessed fines. As a result, this population is housed in our facilities much longer, needing much higher levels of care than we are traditionally designed for. With multiple vendors working to serve this population, having a county employee provide these critical service services will provide a level of consistency that we've not been able to achieve using contractors and vendors. It's also a similar model to what we have accomplished with our Quality Assurance Nurse, which has proven to be very successful. So the next slide, our budget request for Jennifer Road Detention Center is for thirty-two point two million dollars. Jennifer Road Detention Center handles intake, pre-trial detention and maximum security as well as various special housing units for medical, juvenile and behavioral observation. Our average daily population at this facility is three hundred and fourteen and there are two D, excuse me, there are two hundred and forty-nine positions assigned to the facility. Our budget request for Ordnance Road Correctional Center on the next slide is for nineteen point new, two million dollars. Ordnance Road Correctional Center handles both sentenced and pre-trial men and women and provides a robust array of educational reentry substance abuse programs as well as numerous other services. Our average daily population is a hundred and twenty, a hundred and seventy-six, and there are a hundred and twenty-three positions assigned to the facility. Our budget request for the admin is three point four million dollars. Administration is comprised of twenty positions covering human resources, financial services, the oversight of our medical and mental health contracts, as well as oversight of our food service contract. Um these contracts account for roughly seven point three million dollars of our annual budget. Our budget request for the Central Holding Processing Center is for three point seven million dollars. C H P C is the newest addition and offers efficient booking and processing of arrestees while effectively coordinating with our records departments as well as the Commissioner's Office. This past year through March, C H P C processed six thousand two hundred and thirty-two intakes. There are forty-two positions assigned to this facility. And I'll take a pause to see if there are any questions before I go into our capital, capital budget.
Uh real quick, you're uh, how many vacancies do you have?
Um currently, uh we have fifty-five um vacant positions in our officer series. Um out of, I think that's two hundred and ninety-one uh detention officer positions, which is detention officer through, through our captain series.
And, and you grew two positions, right, uh in this budget? In our seventeen.
This, this budget, we're requesting um, it's, it's three positions um. Three, three positions through this, this budget that we're, we're, we're requesting.
Well, in the budget book, it, it looks like two. Uh like you're exchanging sixteen, which you see the
Um, there's another page, um one of those positions, I think if, if I'm not mistaken, and Beau or Pat can jump in, but one of those positions is um an increase funded under the opioid restitution fund, so I think that might be the difference. Is that correct, Pat?
It is two positions.
It is.
One is opioid fund.
Okay.
Oh, okay, so what's that contraction?
Well, it's, it's funded through a, a different funding source.
Okay, got it, okay.
But yeah, two general fund, that's, that's correct.
Okay. All right, nope, that's the question I had, any uh, any other operating questions for uh, yep, see hands coming up, Miss Feedler?
Uh, thank you, I appreciate that. So just for um clarification, your personnel request, position request, were those all included?
I think you froze, I
Yeah, I think she froze, you froze there for a minute there, uh, Miss Feeds. You're back now.
Oh gosh, okay, hold on. Is that, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my question was just, um what were the number of positions totally requested versus what is proposed in this budget?
The three positions I requested, um that, that's exactly what I requested. I think she froze up again, I don't know if she got that response. Did, did you get that response? Those were the three positions I requested in this budget.
And then I see Ms. uh Picker's hands up. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. My question is in a similar vein, so I appreciate um the challenges that you're having with vacancies. I just wanted to clarify that the positions being added are not detention officers there um for the reentry program, is that correct?
Um, yeah, one of the positions is for the reentry initiatives um and, and the other position is for um the uh mental health clinician, and I apologize if I'm losing uh, losing my memory here apparently. Uh what is the other position there?
Um, mental health coordinator, and so it's two positions that we're asking for.
Is it just two?
Correct, and then we're classifying the sixteen detention officer.
Oh, the sixty, okay, I knew there was something else on that page, that, my, my mistake, I'm losing my mind here. Um, yeah, so it is the, the two positions, um one is the mental health uh coordinator um clinician position and then one is the reentry position. And hopefully on, on the reentry position, so what, what came out about the study was um we're, we're trying to manage our population increases by providing services and, and really preventing recidivism. So um hopefully that will um balance us out where down the road, we wouldn't need to ask for an increase in detention officer positions if we can get ahead of um, you know, people actually coming to, to have to be incarcerated. So that's, that's really what we're trying to accomplish with that position.
Thank you, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just have a quick follow-up. So it, are you um, are you feeling comfortable with your uh recruitment processes to um get your, your detention officer vacancies under control? You're feeling good, you need support there?
Um, I, I think I have the support, I mean, and I'll just be honest, um detention positions are always traditionally challenged, challenging to fill. Um, you know, we, we're a profession that's not as well-known. Um, I think I heard the, the chair talk about um you know, the criminal justice system and we're the, we're the forgotten leg. You have police, you have courts, and then you have corrections out there in that criminal justice triangle. Um, so we have always traditionally struggled. I think um over recent times, uh the struggles have been greater working in congregate settings, um especially with COVID and the pandemic. Um, and, and then the other challenge, I think, is just the, the retirement rates. Um, I think last year of some of our twenty um vacancies that we had um at one point in two thousand twenty-two, seventeen of those were um retirements. Um, we have staff with a significant amount of time. Um, the, the sample, the example I gave during my presentation, um twenty-five percent of our sergeants are eligible to retire right now. Um, and, and that's significant, so um we've, we as a group have worked hard on different initiatives um these past two years that I have been here. Um, I'll say I am personally in, involved with recruitment and hiring um. You know, even, even at my level, I've called, you know, candidate lists, I've attended job fairs. Um, you know, it's, it's very important to me, and I think that because it's so important is, is why I'm so closely involved. Um, you know, with, with the processes, uh this past year, I think we've seen more success. Um, as an example, um last year, we hired a total of twenty-one detention officers the entire year. This year, up to date, we have fifteen that we have hired um that we uh know are gonna be hired up to June and we have another twelve individuals in the final stages of our process, so the outlook is definitely getting better, we're seeing more applicants. Um, and for us, it's a numbers, numbers business, the more applicants, the more likely we are to onboard individuals. Um, we have, you know, sought funding support from the county through relief funds for hiring bonuses. Uh, we have a, a stipend for referral bonuses, um you know, Uh, we have a, a stipend for referral bonuses, um, you know, and obviously it's, you know, not as, as much as the police department, but it's, it's definitely competitive for what's out there in the the field as far as corrections go. So we have a lot going on, um, I'd like to, you know, obviously have more, more candidates, available candidates, but um, I think I'm happy with where we are as far as our initiatives and the support that we have for those initiatives. Um, we'd just like to get people across the finish line, so. Thank you for that, that question.
All right, seeing no more hands, I see you had a, you said you were going to transition to capital?
Yep, thank you. Pat, if you could bring that back up. Thank you, and, and we have the page numbers listed for each of these projects here, um. So, uh, for our capital, uh, FY twenty-four capital budget requested, uh, consists of four projects. The first project is funding of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for detention center renovations. Um, Jennifer Road Detention Center was built in the nineteen sixties and requires routine maintenance and repairs to assure that our facility is safe, secure, as well as that it adheres to applicable standards for accreditation. Although not as dated, Ordnance Road Correctional Center was built in nineteen ninety-eight and continues to need, need repairs, as would be expected of a twenty-five-year-old facility that operates twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. It's with this funding that we expect to replace flooring at Jennifer Road Detention Center, redo showers at the Ordnance Road Correctional Center, and continue to maintain fencing, painting, as well as fund other prioritized facility improvements throughout the year. Our second request is the Ordnance Road Security System Upgrade. Uh, this isn't really a request, this is more of a liquidation of funds. Um, this project was completed and it came in seven thousand dollars less than expected, um, which is a miracle in my opinion, um, and so, uh, we're going to be giving back those, uh, seven thousand dollars in funds. Um, this upgraded, upgrade though did improve the safety and security throughout the facility, um, and it's going to benefit both the staff and inmates. Our third project is for the Central Holding Processing Center Parking, um, that's for two hundred and eighty-five thousand. This is in addition to funding that was already approved, I believe, one point eight million dollars. Um, it's for fifty-plus parking spaces across the street from the Westonapolis Fire Station. Um, it's my understanding that the project design is at sixty percent completion, and the current schedule, schedule for the job runs from November twenty-three through January of two thousand twenty-four. Our fourth project is the Ordnance Road Correctional Center Yard Covers for four hundred and two thousand dollars. This project, which has been previously approved, will appropriate, secure, will appropriately secure the yard areas, making the design comparable to other existing yard areas at that facility. The permits for this project are being applied for, and construction is anticipated to begin in the fall of two thousand twenty-three. Our fifth project is the Ordnance Road Correctional Comprehensive Reentry Hub. This, this project totals two point six million dollars. As identified in the Ordnance Road Space Utilization Study, a comprehensive reentry hub is a good investment in utilizing existing space to help was lower recidivism rates in the county and become a central location for providing and coordinating the necessary services and resources that individuals need to be successful. The hub would become shared space with critical partners that provide services such as housing, transportation, labor, benefits, education, and much more. Additionally, this space would be available for both internal incarcerated individuals and individuals supervised in the community on house arrest and pre-trial community supervision, thus reaching all that are justice-involved. In closing, I'd just like to state that our hard-working, dedicated staff have a difficult job protecting our community. The detention facilities are small cities entrusted to the public to provide humane treatment of individuals in a secure environment. This budget will allow us to continue to improve safety, morale, and effectiveness of the overall correctional system. We remain committed to working together and providing public safety, and we're prepared to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Any, uh, questions? See Ms. Raviyan's hands up?
This really isn't a question, but it's really just, um, a thank you for having a vision, um, and, and that, uh, space utilization to, um, provide reentry resources for, um, folks. I'm, I'm really impressed and looking forward to seeing how that model progresses.
Thank you.
And Ms. Feedler?
Um, I just want to say thank you for all that you are doing for public safety in our county. I know you've struggled a lot with retention, so, um, I, I appreciate everything that you're working to do to fill those, those spots and pins.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, I think I don't see any more additional questions, uh, appreciate your time and, uh, commitment to this process. Uh, so I'll leave this, uh, so for the council members, uh, do you want to take a, a five or ten-minute, uh, break here? Uh, so that, okay, so we'll just make it ten minutes. Uh, so we'll go ahead and, uh, pause here for ten minutes. I'm going to turn my screen off as well, at least my camera, and then, uh, I'll be, I guess, we'll reconvene here in about ten minutes. Time is eleven fifty-seven, I believe, so we'll be back here at twelve oh seven.
Thank you very much.
No problem, thank you. All right, time is now twelve oh seven, uh, we'll go ahead and cue up the Office of Emergency Management. And then once everyone, uh, no, secretary, if, can you go ahead and do a roll, uh, that way, uh, and then once we do that, we'll just kick it off, well, uh, we'll start, we'll kick it off pretty.
Yes, I, I can see everybody.
Okay.
Is here, but I'll, I think they're trying to rejoin. So I'm going to start a roll call slowly here, um. I'm just going to go through the districts. Mr. Smith?
Yep, present.
Ms. Picker?
She'll be back.
She'll be back. Mr. Volkey?
Present.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hammer? I, I know she's here too, um, but we'll just, I'll circle back. Ms. Feedler?
Present.
Ms. Radvian? Ms. Ledbetter? All right, Mr. Chair, we are missing, uh, you, Council.
The Summers here, Ms. Summers here.
The Summers here, okay, okay.
So we got, we got four of us.
We have four, okay, you ready to begin?
I am ready, and every time I hear the word, uh, present, I think present from a little comedy skit, I won't go down that path, but, but, uh.
Next time. I am ready, I have the presentation queued up, and so, Ms. Emmerich, I will wait for your prompts, okay?
Yep. We're ready to start.
Ms. Emmerich, on you.
Well, if it's okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and start. This is Darlene Flynn with the Budget Office, and the Office of Emergency Management budget starts on page two ninety-seven in the expense, proposed expense budget. Ms. Emmerich?
All right, go ahead with the presentation. All right, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Pretty Emmerich. I am the Director of the Office of Emergency Management. I would like to introduce my Deputy Director, Joseph Corona, and my Management Aid, Stephanie Arnt, um, who, um, is our, uh, Budget Analyst within the office. Um, so, Office of Emergency Management, if you could progress one slide, please. Um, this is our mission statement. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but obviously, when you think of emergency management, you think of natural disasters. We are there for, when the worst happens, coordinating, collaborating with our partner agencies, not only to respond to an incident, but to provide the best recovery services for our residents in Anarundale County. So making sure that county government is ready for whatever may happen, managing the response to those major emergencies and coordinating with our stakeholders, but ensuring that our jurisdiction is the largest state jurisdiction in Maryland. And that's what we have been since I've taken office here in two thousand twenty striving towards. Um, we are a small office, um, you could tell from our budget compared to our counterparts, we have a smaller budget. But we may do with what we can because we truly believe that serving the residents of Anarundale County and ensuring their safety and preparing them, as well as our county agencies, is our main goals. Next slide, please. So we'll get right into it in the operating budget. As you can see, I have said we are a small. As you can see, I have said we are a small agency. So there's our org chart. I will say, uh, we have a mixture of merit positions as well as grant funded positions. We do rely heavily on grant funding from the federal government. It is one of our major, um, sources, uh, for funding. Along with helping manage those funds for police and fire agencies. Um, so we do have a mixture of both of those, uh, positions. I do want to thank the administration because when I first came into office, we were heavily, heavily reliant on, um, grant funding for positions and we have managed to change some of those positions to merit. Um, funded positions which ensures continuity. Um, in our office. Um, it also attracts, um, recruits, um, highly professionalized emergency management personnel, which was something we also had issues with in the past, but continuing this trend. EM is now a professionalized, um, field where you can go and earn a degree. And so we hope to maintain that level of recruitment of the highly professionalized staff members that we have here because that's how we best um, provide the services to Anarundale County. Next, please. So just a little summary of what we have done, um, in the previous year from our annual report and how our office is divided. So we have operations and planning, training and exercise, communications and outreach and special projects. So we talked about what we do during a natural disaster, right? But what do we do on blue sky days? And we ensure that the county agencies and the public are prepared. This is through operations and planning. We constantly develop, update our plans. That is the key to make sure that county agencies understand what their roles and responsibilities are. And what do we do after those plans are completed? We train and exercise. We have redeveloped our training and exercise program. So there is something each month for county agencies and the representatives that they assign to the Office of Emergency Management to best be prepared. And so our exercises, whether they're discussion based, operational based, um, those are the ones we do every single year in multiple variations, reiterations, because that's what helps us serve residents in the worst of times. And we make sure to track the training compliance. Because luckily, um, disasters don't happen every day and it's sometimes tough to remember what you have to do. But through this consistent training and exercise program and what we track, we've been managed, we have managed to increase the training compliance. As you can see, from twenty twenty to thirteen percent to twenty twenty-two to fifty-two percent. And again, that's what we do on blue sky days. So we talked about preparing county agencies. How do we prepare the public? And that's another main initiative that we have really put a lot of effort to because our communities respond to prevention, preparedness, to responsive recovery in different ways. And the office has acknowledged that we really have to use many different mechanisms and approaches to make sure different communities are prepared. Um, so whether it's Pepper, the preparedness pup for her youth, uh, whether it's helping with the internship program, shadow day contest for high school students. We want to make sure that from the very young age to whether it's, um, with the elderly population that they are prepared and they understand that there are nuances to be prepared and to recovery. And it is our job, our mission to make sure that we reach those different types of communities. Since COVID, there's a lot of other issues that have come up, gaps that have been, um, exposed, um, such as food insecurity and resilience. Um, there's an understanding that different kinds of disasters, um, really exacerbate what, um, gaps there were already there. And so emergency management is growing this field, recognizing that emergencies don't come in terms of just natural disasters anymore. The, there is the opioid emergency. There is what the pandemic has, uh, created in the food insecurity or talking about employment or how businesses have struggled. So there are all types of, um, initiatives to really focus on, um, the different types of, uh, not only disasters as you call them, but what the consequences are. And of course, we do have a, uh, part-time Hispanic outreach coordinator. Again, recognizing communities respond in different ways, that there are many types of communities, and we really have to do our best to reach out to them. Um, especially as the Hispanic population in Anarundale County is one of the majority minority populations. Special projects, um, we talked about different types of emergencies and disasters. There's humanitarian um, emergencies, um, with the fall of Afghanistan and, um, the, the thousands of Afghan refugees that came into the country. Many of them coming into Anarundale County, helping fill those gaps with the collaboration of our health and human services partners and with the state. Um, some of the special projects may not fit in neatly within our, um, organizational structure of the Office of Emergency Management. Doesn't mean that we don't respond to them. Um, one of the big things that, um, the Special Projects Unit takes care of is grant management. Again, I have said we do rely on grants. Uh, we do coordinate grants with fire and police. And so it's our responsibility to make sure that the grants are used in the most effective way. Um, and to collaborate with the state and the federal government to make sure we have that money, monitor the money, um, and use it for the best benefit of all the agencies. Managing our EOC. Um, our Emergency Operations Center is tech heavy. It has to be ready to go at all times and that takes maintenance. So we do have personnel assigned to make sure that there's monthly tech checks that we are following to the best of our budget ability, um, and our grant ability to get the latest technology to help us, uh, respond rapidly to emergencies and to, um, best collaborate. I will say in the past, um, the Emergency Operations Center was the central physical hub for that collaboration and coordination. COVID has opened a new world of virtual and hybrid collaboration and coordination, which has changed the field in emergency management. And our physical presence in the EOC quite hasn't caught up to what the technology can ensure, um, for that future collaborating coordination of what that might look like. And that's something we are working towards. And lastly, the public assistance reimbursement. COVID was a federally declared emergency. And so the Office of Emergency Management worked, um, with the state and the feds on public assistance reimbursement, uh, which we got back to the tune of around eight million dollars. Extremely proud of our staff uh, for reimbursing the taxpayers of, um, Anarundale County, um, but in, in usage of wonderful programs that we had had during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Next slide, please. So just in a year review of pictures, again, heavily focused on community outreach, expanding our scope of the projects we have done and to best keep Anarundale prepared. Um, and working on how, if something happens, because something will happen, um, how to best recover. So a lot of our plans have been redeveloped, taking into consideration the lessons that, uh, the pandemic has taught us. And again, making sure that we focus on the staff as well. If we don't train our staff and make sure that they can pursue the trainings and the certifications that they need, it will not help our office in terms of better serving our county. One thing I do want to highlight is that we did send one of our staff members, our PIO, to assist Florida uh, during Hurricane Ian. And again, that speaks to the professionalism of our staff, but the opportunities in making sure that they're able to, um, keep up to date with what's happening, having lessons learned and bringing back those lessons. If we ever do face such a, a situation that Florida often faces with, uh, strong hurricanes and natural disasters. Next slide, please. So again, with blue sky days, we're just not sitting around. Um, we have been involved in legislation. I know I'm going to speak of our collaboration of the state. Um, in twenty twenty-one, as you guys had heard, we had a series of tornadoes come through. Um, we also had some coastal flooding that impacted the Annapolis and Anarundale County area. And through our advocacy, the city of Annapolis and, um, Anarundale County OEM, um, we co-chaired the State Disaster Relief Fund Work Group. Because there's a recognition that disasters cost money, whether it's preparing for them or responding to them and recovering from them. And the current system we have now, right now, does not recognize what I call micro disasters. With the advent of climate change, there are smaller systems going through that causes localized damage and consequences that the federal and state governments are not equipped and their programs are not equipped to handle. So what can the locals do? So we lobbied the state to create a fund that locals can access. When there is a time, we do not get state declaration or a federal declaration. And it's through the work of the city of Annapolis and Anarundale County that we set up the State Disaster Recovery Fund. And if you want to do a little more research about it, it's state, it's state, sorry, Senate Bill six fifty, House Bill seven, eight, nine. It was passed recently. Uh, the bill signing ceremony is sometime in the next couple of weeks. But this is what we are doing as an office. Learning from what lessons can, um, learn, lessons learned. And taking those lessons learned and not just sitting on them, right? Improving on them, making changes where we, it can be possible. And this is one example of it, working with the state and creating a system that not only benefits our county, but the state of Maryland. And as I'm sure you know, working on local legislation, uh, with the, uh, Special Event Permit Bill. Um, again, seeing a need and making sure that we could get the best possible system set up in collaboration with fire and police. Next slide, please. So here are some of the FY twenty-four budget changes, as I'm sure you can see in the budget book. Um, you know, our, my public safety colleagues have talked about retention and making sure that positions match the job actually done. And so what we have done for this budget year is ask for a position reclassification and, um, two position reclassifications, I'm sorry. So one is of the management aid, um, reclassifying from management aid to management assistant one. And that's because there's been, as the office has grown, there's been increased responsibility. And what the management aid had been doing, um, for all these years, um, has basically been the work of a management assistant one. And it's only right to properly promote the position to the work that they're actually doing, which helps retain personnel. Um, the Emergency Management Training Exercise Coordinator, as I said, the program has been redeveloped in terms of the trainees and exercises we offer almost every month to our, um, Emergency Operations Center representations, um, representatives, excuse me, and for the agencies. And this position has taken much more of a leadership role. It is key, important as one of the units in our office to make sure that this position is, um, is, is elevated to the role that it, it, it deserves. And also this position created the first comprehensive county training and exercise plan, which we had not had. Right? And again, this is our, um, by reclassifying these positions, this maintains, um, for our office well, um, trained and, um, um, well-deserving personnel who have put in the work. Next slide, please. And so the other portion that I want to talk about is our Warming Relief Program. The Office of Emergency Management is in charge of our Extreme Temperature Plan. Many of you know probably of the Winter Relief Program. Um, this program is for county residents who do not qualify for winter relief. But still need shelter when the temperature gets very, very cold. Um, recognition that what we had, um, in terms of sheltering options in the plan perhaps was not working. We piloted a program for this season in, um, the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Um, it began on January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, but as you can see from the stats, uh, a total of sixty-three different people were served on average. Obviously, there's a need for this program. We are concerned for the welfare of our residents and again, making sure that all different types of communities are served. When there is extreme weather conditions. Um, so that has been added to the budget um, in coordination with their Health and Human Services, of course, to better serve, uh, this population of Anarundale County. I think I'll stop here if there's any questions before I move on to the capital budget.
None of this, I don't see any hands up at this point. I guess we'll move over to capital budget.
All right. If you could put up the PowerPoint again. Next slide, please. The one and only capital project that we have is quite a big one. Um, so if you can find it on page ninety. Um, this has been talked about for many, many years, and I am very excited along with police and fire to finally be able to execute this project um, for the next couple of years. This is the Joint nine-one-one Public Safety Center along with the new EOC. I think much has been discussed on why we need a consolidated nine-one-one center. Um, it's again, coming up to the standards that have been established by the state. Um, you know, I want to say our current fire and police departments with their nine-one-one services does an excellent job. This will only enhance the services that's going to be provided to county residents in the next couple of years. Um, we have finalized the site as been announced yesterday. Um, and we're in the process of finalizing the architectural and engineering firms that will help design, develop and build this, uh, uh, new nine-one-one center, not just for current times, but in a future forward, um, design to, um, accompany expansion and to make sure that the latest technology can be incorporated. Um, Anarundale County, um, received two point four million from federal funding and grant funding specifically for the EOC that can be applied for this project. And I'm sure many of you have heard, um, the governor's budget included ten million dollars, um, as a, a welcome addition to the money that will be spent for this. And not only are we, you know, I know there is a final budget, uh, figure for this. We are dedicated to pursuing more grant funding, understanding that this is, uh, an expensive project and we're going to explore all types of, uh, funding mechanisms that we can for a very good cause, um, that hopefully will be completed in twenty twenty-six.
Quick question for me. Uh, so the, the EOC that you have now, um, um, what happens to that facility?
So in the current location of the EOC is also the backup nine-one-one center. And we plan to expand the backup nine-one-one center into that EOC space.
Sure. Now, where, where specifically is the land? Is, I mean, I know it's in that northern cluster, but where, where would this thing be at?
The General's Highway location.
Okay, got it. All right. Any additional questions on, uh, the capital project, the capital budget for EOCs for? Yes. Oh, crap.
Officer of Emergency Management, I'll help you out there.
OEM, not ELC. Okay, I see Ms. Fiedler, hand up.
Thank you. I just want to first thank, um, Ms. Emmerich for her presentation today and congratulations on finding a location. I know that this has been in discussion for quite a bit of time and it's exciting to hear that a location has been identified and we're moving forward with that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And, you know, and unfortunately, uh, we have to prepare for the worst. If we're ever utilizing you, it's, 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 you know, crap has hit the fan, right? And so hopefully uh, as we prepare and build out our, uh, uh, sort of continuity of operations and, and cool plans that we have, we never have to use them, but you always want to be prepared to have them just in case. Uh, because then, uh, you know, uh, without being organized as a government, it would, it would really be hampered. And so totally understand this process. Just about every major institution, uh, has sort of a continuity of operations or a cool plan, uh, and this is no different. So, uh, makes one hundred percent sense to me. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, and, uh, Councilwoman, uh, woman, Radvian, uh, did have to step away. She has to go to work. Uh, she do sense her apologies, but just wanted to give you all a heads up. Uh, we will now bring in, uh, Social Services.
We have Ms. Edith Harrison here for Social Services. Ms. Harrison, we need, I'm, I'm prompting you to unmute. There you go.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Edith Harrison, and I am the Acting Director for the Anna and County Department of Social Services. I also have with me one of my finance members, Ms. Chris Greenagel. And this afternoon, we'll be presenting our budget to you that deals with. That deals with the fiscal year twenty-four that allows us the opportunity to not only present. Through this same thing that also shares you the work that has been done during the pandemic year that brings us to this point. That keeps us where we want to continue to support the work that is going to both. Um, the community as well as the work that is going and to the work that we do. And so with that said. Are you able to present, darling?
Yeah, um, Starlene Flynn with the Budget Office. Um, the Department of Social Services, uh, expense budget begins on page two sixty-one of the proposed budget book. I'll turn over to you, Edith. Thank you.
As you can see from the message at the bottom in the left-hand corner. Our goal remains and always continues to be helping build stronger, safer and more economically stable families of all of those. And true them. Next slide. We are three hundred and sixty-five physicians strong in the department of social services. And we are composed of both state as well as county physicians. Next slide. This year's budget requests other supportive services. Because we feel that these services have been expanded and expounded upon throughout the pandemic. And continues to be valuable in the work that we do. Those areas on needed support are in our supplement and nutrition assistance program. Previously known as food stamps and we now call it SNAP. Our summer SNAP program, which allows us to feed kids during those months when school is out. So that they don't have to worry about whether or not they're going to eat or whether their meal is going to function. Our community outreach area, which allows us to partner with the local library and school. Meet our customers where they will, instead of them having to come to us, instead of them having to sign on to a computer or their phone. We go to them and try to meet them within emergency as well as basic everyday needs. And lastly, our homeless services network falls under our community initiative program. Where we are able to go out into the public, go out and reach them where they are. Where we find a lot of times they are, and sometimes it's in the woods, sometimes it's on the street. But our thing is to make sure that when we meet them, that we are able to provide outreach services to them. Shelter them if we're able to, and if not, to provide alternative shelter as well as supportive services. Next slide. As we can see from the members from the past fiscal year. We have been able to reach and assist a new member, uh, citizen in Anarundel County. And not only through our weather SNAP program, but also through our summer SNAP programs for alternative. Next slide. Our community outreach out funds for the past fiscal year. Showed that we were able to actually go to all of the local libraries and partner with them. By spreading out and providing interventionist services for those individuals who need their help. With paying their way, who need help with paying for their utility bills as well as. Having to decide whether or not they were going to eat or they're going to be able to secure a technical subscription as well as number services. And we were also able to provide for them an individual who could take applications for them fit. If we go into a few more details with regard to our home and services program. As you can see, as I said, they are feet on the ground. They have gone out. They meet these individuals, they assess their needs. And not only have they been able to assess those needs, but they've also been able to place them in shelters. Both permanent housing as well as temporary housing. And if there were any other needs that presented themselves, they are also able to assist them in making referrals. And ensuring that they don't suffer either. Another area that falls underneath of our community initiatives program is our back to school and holiday care. We are very grateful because we are able to partner with the Board of Education. To make sure that students when they are going back to school are able to have backpacks if they want to be the part. Not only in elementary, but also to get a thousand dollars each towards teen supplies for those who are in middle school. And hopefully alleviate that concern from that parent who's concerned as to whether or not they're going to have the funds. To be able to provide these items for their child. And the last part is making sure that on the holidays time. That each and every family is a senior that is to freedom benefits and what is needed just as a meal. And not only a meal, but making sure that if there are any other items that they're in need of, that we're able to support them. And so for these reasons, we are requesting to be able to continue to fund those positions that support these areas. Our community initiatives and programs volunteer for or need, is an individual who supports. The include steps of making sure that we do provide the services needed for back to school, holiday care. As well as our volunteer services program. Our family investment specialist as an individual who would be in addition to the one that currently with. So that we can reach all of the customers who show that at the library considering the benefits. And not do it periodically this week or that day, but do it on a consistent and regular basis. Make sure that with regard to the homeless outreach position. That we're able to keep those positions. Most of those positions are granted. And we know it was granted more often than not, they do come to a period where they expire. And we want to retain those individuals because they have been so key and critical to us being successful and the work that we do. Our offer funding has supported us greatly as far as allowing the county to match the state. And ensuring that funds were available to support the summer SNAP program. And then lastly, our offer funding fund, the ongoing operational support of Sarah's House. And Sarah's House is the one shelter in the county that will allow our families to come in. Most notably, you will find your separation ends out. But this allows the families, and we want to continue to be able to support them, the device that they needed approximately for itself. Next slide. Are there any questions?
Uh, no, I think, well, I'm going to wait for hands, but it, it, I've worked with you all for probably thirteen years doing the holiday sharing program. Doing obviously the Christmas stuff, uh, we assist with. So, uh, grateful for the, uh, team effort, uh, that you all put into that. And making sure that these, the families that we assist with, uh, are taken care of. So, I know it's a labor of love. Any additional questions from the council? Okay. See none. Um, you have, you don't have capital, do you?
No.
Okay. Alright, well, thank, thank you for this opportunity to hear about some of the highlights that you've done over the last year.
Thank you, and thanks everyone for your time. Have a great afternoon.
Yes, ma'am, you too. And now we will be joined by our. She's still there?
I'm here. You, uh, froze on my end for a moment.
Oh, yeah. So, welcome. It's good to see you.
You too. How are you?
Now, I'm doing, staying busy. So, the floor is yours.
Hey, uh, good afternoon. I'm Ann Colley. I'm the state attorney for Anarundel County. And I'm joined by Jessica Dagel, who is my deputy state attorney, who I would like to thank for her work once more on our budget. And I'd like to thank the Budget Office and, um, the administration as well for their assistance in our budget. Um, we have a short slideshow and I'll answer any questions. Um, I know there's some new members on the county council, so I just wanted to. You can go on to the next slide, um, please.
Sorry, I hate to interrupt, but I just want to point out that the, uh, the budget can be found on page three oh nine of your budget book. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, just a little, um, bit about us. We have four different locations. Circuit Court is our main office where we try the majority of our felony and more serious crimes. We have an Annapolis District Court, a Glenburn District Court, and then we have a body worn camera review office, which we share space with county police, also here in Annapolis. Um, you can see in the budget book that we have funding for one hun- one hundred and thirty-nine pins. And, um, the increase for two of those employees will cost only twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, because we are combining, um, money and positions, um, in places where we already had the funding. But I'll get into that in a few moments. If you can go to the next slide, slide please. Hmm, this is a organizational chart showing the various divisions in our office. We have experienced attorneys in both the district court and the circuit court, which we find very beneficial. Uh, especially to help the newer attorneys in the district court learn the ropes of prosecuting crime here in Anarundel County. Uh, you can go on to the next slide, please. So, uh, we include this slide just to show you some of the recognition that we've gotten in our community. Um, we have, uh, Moreau Hoskins. She's the second on the left. She was, uh, found by the Daily Record, Maryland Leading Women Under Forty. She, uh, was awarded that. Um, honor this past year. Moreau is an A S A in our, uh, felony narcotics team, and she prosecuted homicide cases as well. She was selected by a panel of judges based on her professional experience and her community involvement. Uh, Jennifer Dowd won the Anarundel County Bar President Award this year. Bill Kaffet won the State Attorneys Association Award for his work with the legislature in getting, um. Legislation passed that, uh, helped criminal prosecution. And I and my office both received the Anti-Defamation League Shield Award or Hate Gang Prosecution. Uh, I personally prosecuted the leader of the Aryan Brotherhood, uh, hate gang. Who ordered a murder, uh, in the Maryland prison systems of a rival gang leader. And I also prosecuted the two men who carried out his orders and killed another inmate. So this Shield Award recognizes individuals and agencies, task forces, um, throughout the United States. Uh, for their successful investigations and prosecutions for hate crime, uh, matters. Next slide please. So, one of our key objectives is our continued commitment to our community. Um, members of our office and I appear regularly at community events. Um, we participate in community forums. And, um, that is part of our, our key objective. Here you see us at National Night Out, which is a law enforcement, um, evening that interacts with members of the public. And on the far right side is, um, a protecting places of worship forum. Which I participated in with my deputy, other deputy state attorney, which is a public meeting to discuss how law enforcement. Uh, fights hate crimes in our community. Another one of our key objectives is to continue, uh, vigorously prosecuting DUI and fatal collisions. We have a specialized unit for that. And we also focus on holding violence criminals accountable, including gun violence crimes. Uh, next slide please. So, um, we received grant funding in twenty twenty-three, a federal grant to collaborate with county schools and other county and state agencies. And we instituted our juvenile justice therapeutic crisis intervention project. And our aim is to decrease the number of incarcerated juveniles in our county, provide counseling and mentorship to juvenile offenders. And connect students to behavioral support services, mental health treatment and trauma-informed therapy. And you see pictured on the left is our Life is Clinical Counselor Shante Elliott Lucas. And she has really, um, been making a difference in the lives of juveniles. We have a great example of, of one such instance. We had a young, uh, female teenager whose grandmother had passed away, and the grandmother was her legal guardian. Uh, passed away in the summer of twenty twenty-two. The, uh, girl did not feel safe at her home. Her mother had passed away. Her father had a history of abuse of the mother and, uh, of the child. So she found herself staying with different friends each night and couch surfing. Uh, she had a history of coming to school every day, but wasn't necessarily attending all of her classes. She thought of her school as a safe haven, haven due to chaotic home environment. Uh, she had an incident where she was assaulted off of school property by a group of her peers and received nine stitches. And the school did not allow her to come back to school until she was medically cleared. She met with Ms. Elliott Lucas on her first day back to school after she was medically cleared. Unfortunately, the next day she was in another physical altercation when she was coming home from school on her bus ride. Some of the same people who had attacked her before had attacked her again. Uh, because she participated in a, an altercation, the school suspended her. Which you can imagine for a young person who thinks of school as a respite from chaos, that was very problematic. She was despondent. She lost all hope. And Ms. Shante Lewis began addressing this young woman's housing needs. She insisted that the school sent study materials home for the girl so that she could study and not fall behind in school. While she was awaiting registration in an alternative educational program, which was, um, going to be a three-week period of transition. Uh, with Ms. Shante, um, Lewis's help, she was able to help the girl return to a traditional school setting. She's in counseling now. She is living with her father under a safety plan with social services, and she has a job. Um, so that's just one of the ways that we, we try to help, um, young people who are on a path that could, um, result in disaster for them. And we do that all with federal grant funding. Next slide please. Another major accomplishment that we had, uh, last year was multiple first and second degree murder convictions and sentencings. And one in particular was the successful prosecution of the murderer of Michelle Cummings, who was the mother of a Navy midshipman. Who was killed by a stray bullet here in Annapolis. Um, the shooter tried to kill two young people who were on their way home from a date. Uh, these slides illustrate one of our employees, John Foster, who is our demonstrative evidence specialist. And these are the types of, um, audiovisual, uh, representations he comes up with, which we play for our juries. In the courtroom on our smart boards. Um, the map on the right actually shows that we have live action surveillance video. We could trace the, uh, path of the shooter in the community through the use of surveillance. And, uh, he's so good at his job that the police often use him to, uh, synthesize their evidence. Uh, when they have audiovisuals. So he's, he's an incredible asset to our office. Uh, next case, the next slide rather, please. Um, this is some of the, um, family members of Michelle Cummings. You see her on the bottom right in the orange shirt. She was literally sitting on the patio celebrating her son's induction. Into the Naval Academy when she was gunned down. Um, all of her family members attended court, and when you see some of our travel expenses for the state attorney's offices. It's often for family members and victims and witnesses to attend court and, uh, to testify in hearing. Next slide please. These are some of the headlines that we've had other major cases. Uh, one is the prosecution of a MS thirteen gang member for murder. We also recently convicted a man named Paul Harrell, who was a serial rapist from Washington State. After serving approximately seventeen years in Washington State for raping three women. He returned to Maryland and he worked as a cleaning person. And he actually targeted one of, targeted one of the women whose house he cleaned, uh, the day before. And our office was able to convince a circuit court judge. That Mr. Harrell's prior crimes and prior rapes were relevant to prove his identity and that he had the same modus operandi, M O. When he attempted to rape women, and we had these three prior victims from Washington State actually come to Maryland and testify twice. Once in a motions hearing and once at trial. And, uh, that helped prove that he was also guilty of this attempted rape, and we got a, uh, life sentence for him. Uh, for that crime. Uh, another major case we had was a Glenn Burn stabbing where a victim was stabbed to death after, um, someone broke into his car. Uh, we got a life that spent all the sixty-year sentence, and we also had a man named Mark Tom that we, uh, convicted of a sex abuse of a child. He got a forty-five-year sentence for that. So we're very proud of some of our bigger cases. Along with our everyday cases that we prosecute here in the county. Next slide. Uh, I'd like to thank, um, the county council and the budget office and our county executive for the funding that you gave us last year. And what we. And what we were able to do with that uh, funding is we hired three additional body worn paralegals, body worn camera paralegals, and it has allowed us to bring down a backlog, which was at the time about ninety days backlog, awaiting processing of that video uh, down to a thirty-day. Um, so that's a major accomplishment. And our body worn camera uh, unit is fully staffed and it's so successful that the uh, state attorney's offices in other counties and in the city are asking uh, to come and tag along and see how we've done it. We've built uh, an excellent unit. And um, Baltimore City, St. Mary's County, Waukesha County are all trying to build or rebuild their units and, and they are looking to us as a model. One of the things that we found that was extremely successful is that we have hired retired police officers who have knowledge of police procedure. And they can help, um, they actually act as paralegal. So this is a second job after retirement. They can help the other paralegals understand what they are seeing in the body worn camera footage. In fact, we've hired two retired green belt police, a retired Baltimore City officer, a retired Secret Service agent. And now we uh, with this uh, funding that you gave us last year, we have thirteen full-time and one part-time paralegal in that unit. Uh, next slide, please. So another um, benefit of last year's budget, which we're thanking you for again, is uh, we were able to fund and staff a licensed professional counselor. Uh, this is Kendall Patterson. She works with children who are either sexually or physically abused or have witnessed a violent crime. She's trained in child development and assessing the mental health needs of children who are experiencing trauma. And what she does is she uh, attends child forensic interviews at the county's Child Advocacy Center. She observes and provides feedback to forensic interviewers and to our prosecutors and police. And she helps our office strengthen our cases, ensures that we are interacting with children in a very trauma-informed manner so that we don't do more harm to them. And she provides uh, training to prosecutors and to the police and how best to interact with and understand trauma in children. She helps us prepare children to testify in court as well. So we thank you for giving us that position last year. Uh, we're very proud of Kendall Patterson and she's actually uh, presenting at an international symposium on child abuse in Huntsville, Alabama on two different topics this summer. Uh, next slide, please. So this year's um, budget change will result in one of our historically grant-funded positions to turn into a full-time merit position. And that will be with no additional cost to the county. Uh, the Violence Against Women Act um, Grant, VAWA, uh, is a full-time funded grant position. However, we're asking that it be a merit position. Again, it will cost nothing to the county. Our office has been receiving this grant for more than fifteen years. And so now we're asking that it be called what it is, a full-time continuing position with our office. And so what a VAWA advocate does is it work is the person who works with circuit court cases involves involving violence specifically against women. Many cases that our offices involve strangulation. So these are some of the most serious domestic violence, violence cases in our office. So the advocate would conduct a danger assessment, also follow a value assessment to help predict the likelihood of serious injury and death. And our current advocates speak both Spanish and Portuguese. So a typical case that a VAWA advocate might see would be an unemployed victim with a child perhaps dependent on her abuser or the abuser's family or a place to live. And the advocate gets information to the prosecutor that helps keep, to keep the abuser um, detained in the detention center if there is a uh, history of violence. The advocate then helps provide uh, safety planning, helps connect the victim to resources such as safe temporary housing, counseling and case management through the uh, domestic violence resource provider, the YWCA of Annapolis. And once the victim is able to hold the abuser accountable, um, we, we also help with um, other counseling, legal assistance and um, housing. Without these types of interventions, victims would often choose to stay with their abusers because they have no other hope of independence. Um, again, the county has been funding um, this through grants. I'm sorry, we have been able to fund this position through grants um, over the years as well as the county funds the part that's not covered by the uh, the grant uh, historically for the past fifteen years. So we're just converting the money that we already have into this position. Uh, the next slide, please. One other uh, slight budget difference uh, this year has a very, very low cost of twenty-two thousand six hundred dollars approximately. And it's basically creating a full-time position in the district court by combining two current temporary positions. Uh, historically, we've had five temporary district court positions, which are uh, part-time and hourly. And these are the folks who do really a lot of the paperwork uh, that would pile up when we don't have them. Uh, administrative tasks have increased over the years because of body worn camera and discovery um, obligation. And expungement laws have changed. So there's a lot of uh, backlog of paperwork that you have to, to stay ahead of. Um, so it's difficult to keep low-wage employees. People are generally looking for a full-time job. And so what we found is when we have these part-time jobs, we train these folks, they're very good at it. And then they are able to use the skills and the train that they get from us to get a job in the private sector. So we'd rather keep those folks instead of having unemployed as part-time uh, employees. So by combining those two part-time um, jobs that are already funded with our temporary pay, it would cost the county just the twenty-two thousand dollars on to do so. And uh, that brings me to the end of the last slide. And I wanted to say thank you for your time and for your consideration. Um, and I'm free to answer any questions.
So maybe, I do have one uh, just one simple question. How, you know how many cases your attorneys uh, work through per year?
Uh, generally, uh, in the circuit court, there's a lot more in the district court. So um, so twenty twenty-one, we had twenty-two forty-four, two thousand two hundred and forty-four circuit court cases.
Okay.
And then in twenty twenty-two, we had one thousand eight hundred and eighty-three, twenty twenty-three so far, six hundred and fifty-nine. That's just in the circuit court. Uh, it's anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five or forty thousand in the district court. That's anything from serious traffic uh, all the way up to some felonies that are tried in the district court. Um, so historically, we're in the three thousand, um, you know, pre-pandemic, about three thousand cases. But that also depends on whether people pray a jury trial. So if they're in the district court and there might be a visiting judge or judges that they're concerned that they might get a, a different type of sentence, they'll ask for a jury trial. So those numbers can fluctuate a little bit depending on what's going on in the district court.
Any additional questions from council members? See Ms. Pfeeler's hand raised.
Thank you. This is just a comment. Um, I appreciate you sharing specifics of what your office has done in the past year. Specifically, um, the Michelle Cummings case, I followed that in the paper and it was really extraordinary to see how that case was put together with all of the camera footage. So my hat's off to the gentleman that you referenced. I can't remember his name. Yes, thank you. Um, you, you displayed some talented team members today. Um, so thank you for everything that your office does and to them individually.
Well, thank you very much. That was a very gut-wrenching case. It was very, very difficult. And uh, we had two of our top attorneys on that case.
Good. Seeing no additional questions. Thank you for uh, for giving us a full brief on your uh, your organization.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate um, everything that you all do. You have a difficult job and good luck in the next few days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Uh, Mr. Chair and members of the council, I just wanted to let you know too, Mr. Volkey had to leave the meeting unfortunately, but we do have five members still in attendance.
Okay, and uh, I think we have Orphans Court uh, coming up next.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Oh, and it looks like, okay, there we go. Thank you to the host for activating my video. Um, good afternoon. Thank you all so much for your time this afternoon and for all your hard work. I know that uh, budget season is an incredibly busy time for the county council. Um, and I am grateful for your time. I also want to give a special thank you to Kyle Madden, um, who's been particularly helpful from the budget office and helping us through this process. Um, so for some background, for those who don't know, the Orphans Court deals with um, probate uh, law and we manage estates. Um, and specifically cases where there might be a challenge to um, a will or to the conduct of a personal representative who's managing an estate. Um, it is just the three judges uh, who are part of this budget and the court itself. Um, the register of wills is handled separately um, under the com- comptroller's office. So um, they are separate from the county.
One second, David. Sorry. Um, your budget can be, the budget for the Orphans Court can be found on page three oh six. I just want to point that out for everybody that's looking for it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, and so we uh, partner with the register of wills office and their staff do support us, but um, we are our own separate entity funded by the county. Um, our budget is incredibly small relative to much of the other things that you will be reviewing um, through the budget process, but um, for some additional context, we are uh, recently moved to a new courthouse. We are no longer in the um, same facilities as the circuit court. Um, for Anoromo County, we are on a, in a separate office, um, which does have some impact on some of these requests. Um, we're also looking to expand access in some ways to the court. So I'll, I'll dive right in. I don't actually, I didn't prepare a set of slides. It's really just uh, a set of very simple requests. Um, the first is around um, the implementation and opportunity for members of the community to access Zoom hearings or virtual hearings. Um, this is something that we have not done yet as an institution, but we would like to make available uh, really in limited circumstances. Um, when, you know, we have witnesses who are out of town or folks who are unable to get to the courthouse for a hearing. Um, so there are some requests for some um, additional supplies and equipment for the judges to use um, in the courtroom or in our chambers um, to make sure that that is um, accessible uh, to members of the public and that the technology aligns and um, is efficient, usable without any issues. Uh, so we're going to be standing up that process this year in the next few months. Um, we are also, uh, this is actually not mentioned in the budget, but it's a new thing that we are um, going to be implementing. Um, we just sort of started this process about a month ago after we had already submitted our budget request, but we are opening up in uh, mediation services, uh, which is a great opportunity for some people to resolve their situations and issues out of court, which saves um, the court and the county uh, money. It also saves uh, the, the constituents of Anoromo County time and money as well, uh, because they don't have to pay as much in legal fees for, to bring attorneys to court. Um, and it often leads to a better uh, conclusion of justice, whereas in many cases, the legal system has an, a winner-take-all system, right? Where one person gets a hundred percent, one person loses a hundred percent. That's true as well with estates and probate. Um, so this is an opportunity for some folks to reach a conclusion um, where they, they come to a consensus around a benefit. Um, and can resolve their situations through mediation. So we're standing up that process some and what, and may end up using some of the funding in this budget for that. Um, while we are seeking a, a grant from the Maryland judiciary for the next budget cycle. Um, also, as I mentioned, because we are in a new courthouse, there are some requests in here for some additional supplies and furniture. Um, there are still some things that we have not set up in our office or don't have access to, such as even a meeting space for the judges and the register of will staff or from um, staff of the county who are coming to help us with standing things up like mediation and Zoom hearings. So um, there's a budget in here for a conference table, for example, some additional chairs, um, some additional desks, um, some really basic office supplies like that. Um, new robes for the judges. Actually, we, we, there's no space in our current budget for that. So we are using sort of hand-me-down robes currently. Um, and a new set of professional legal books uh, for, you know, those update year to year. And then also for us to then bring into the courtroom because we don't have a set currently to bring into the courtroom. Um, so I think all in all, it's, it's really only an increase of about twenty thousand dollars for the um, budget as a whole um, that we've requested in supplemental budget requests. So though, that's, that's really all there is. I just wanted to share that with the county council. Make sure you are aware of the context um, and the, the, the reasoning behind our requests. But I'm happy to answer any additional questions. Um, and let, and let you all get back to your, your very busy schedules.
Any additional questions? Okay, Ms. Picker.
Just uh, thank you uh, Mr. Duba for that presentation. I just, for the, for the newer council members, um, you will see in the personal services uh, an increase, but that was passed last year by the council. Um, it's not something that Mr. Duba requested this year on his phone. So it was legislated last, last year and we're seeing that. So I really want to thank you for your uh, very professional uh, presentation and the context around your, your budget ask. It all seems reasonable to me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for that context. Um, yes, there are some budgeted increases in the judges' salaries this year and for the next two years following as well. Um, and I um, I think this is the first time Orphans Court has actually made budget requests in several years. So uh, I've, it's been a great process. Again, thank you to Kyle and thank you to the council. Uh, thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you. All right. So at this time, we'll transition over to Board of Elections. Uh, and I'll kick it off with Bo. If you want to do your uh, introductory comments and and additional staff. I think you're on mute.
Good afternoon. This is Bo from the Budget Office. I'm the Budget Analyst for the Board of Supervisor of Elections. Their budget begins on page, there are three hundred twenty-two of the uh, FY twenty-four proposed budget book. I will now turn it over to the Director for his remarks and the presentation.
Thank you.
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, my name is David Garris. I'm the Director of the Anoromo County Board of Elections. With me is Richard Sejak. He's the Deputy Director. Uh, thank you. It's been uh, great working with Bo. Um, do you have a copy of my slideshow? Okay, great. Uh, if you'd like to go to the next page. All right. So um, first page, there's no rain dates for election day, primary election in uh, uh, FY twenty-four. You can see early voting is the second to the ninth. And then election day, the primary election is uh, the fourteenth. It's presidential primary. That's our uh, that's our goal this year. Next year in FY twenty-five, we'll be doing the Presidential General. So as you uh, as you may have heard us say, there's a question about whether or not you prepare for a regular Sunday or an Easter Sunday. So in our world, um, the Presidential General Election, that's kind of like the equivalent of our Easter Sunday. It's the biggest, biggest election that we'll have in terms of turnout. Uh, to give you a brief overview of the board, we have a five-member board appointed by the governor. Uh, because the governor, the new governor is a Democrat, it will be three Democrats and two Republicans. Uh, we're expecting one new Democratic and one new Republican member. Uh, aside from myself and Rich, there are twenty-seven full-time state employees. Um, for the calendar year of twenty twenty-four, we're looking forward to eighteen voting days and twenty-two canvassing days. So forty days of voting and canvassing. Uh, new for this coming election is going to be the uh, eight days of pre-election canvassing that we're going to be doing um, before the beginning of early voting. That was a new piece of legislation. Uh, so that's going to give us some more time to canvas and open the uh, paper ballots. If you'd like to switch to the next slide. Uh, this is just a copy of our organization chart, gives you a brief uh, high-level overview. Uh, we have myself and Rich, three program managers, uh, level, layer of supervisors who oversee election judges' training, Dropbox voting, mail-in voting. And then group specialists that work on uh, things like mail intake, the voting system and uh, assignments and payroll for election judges and voter registration. You'd like to move to the next slide? Uh, these are just some statistics. Uh, we have four hundred and eleven thousand uh, registered voters. We're the fourth-largest jurisdiction in the state of Maryland. Um, a lot of people think that, you know, Baltimore City is the above us, but that's not the case anymore. Uh, we've passed them in terms of voter registration. Uh, and in terms of transactions, you can see the number of transactions in the last like election in twenty twenty. You can see we had nearly two hundred thousand transactions, twenty sixteen, almost two hundred thousand. Uh, this year, we're at about fifty thousand-ish transactions, forty-five thousand. But next year, again, we're expecting about two hundred thousand transactions. So we're expecting very busy, very busy time. Uh, if you'd like to move to the next, next, our mail-in voting, uh, you can see we have some statistics here. Uh, we had thirty-two drop boxes and we had about thirty-two thousand people that uh, use the drop boxes. So very popular program. Uh, in twenty twenty, we had about a hundred and six thousand ballots through the uh, through the mail. Uh, process improvements that we implemented in twenty twenty-two was the uh, use of Tritech Vote-by-Mail mail sorting equipment. mail sorting equipment. Uh, this reduces the amount of uh manual labor that we need to sort mail uh considerably. Uh, the other large jurisdictions in Maryland have all uh incorporated these machines as well as jurisdictions in Delaware and Georgia. Uh, if you'd like to move to the next slide. Uh, new for twenty twenty four, uh you can see we have some early voting sites. That's going to be one of the first things that we uh work with the new board to approve. Uh, that's due in December of this year. Uh, we have Owenton Green, the Gladys Street Green Banquet Hall. We're working on sites in Severna Park in Annapolis, Edgewater, and Severn. Um, there will be new uh library in Riviera Beach, so we're looking forward to turning that into a early voting site as well. Uh, some of the keys for us, uh pre-election canvassing is going to be a major change. Uh, ballot Dropbox security, we're working with the the CCT Division of the Police Department to uh place the drop boxes within the zone of the ballot drop box, excuse me, the CCTV cameras. Uh, in our election judge division, uh we are going to be the uh state legislature approved a pay increase. Uh, salary will increase to a minimum of two hundred and fifty for service and fifty dollars for training and a one hundred dollar bonus for returning election judges. So uh, great incentive, and we thank the state legislature for passing all that uh wonderful um requirements. If you'd like to switch to the next uh slide, uh next is just some comparative statistics. Uh, the twenty twenty two gubernatorial general election, that was the last election that we did. And then uh for your information, the twenty twenty presidential primary, I included these because that's the last like election, so the next election that we're doing in this coming fiscal year is the uh twenty twenty four presidential primary. So you can see um twenty twenty is a interesting one off. We didn't actually do any early voting. Uh, that was the COVID year, but um we are prepared for a successful election. Uh, we want to thank uh Bo, it was very good working with him and the team at the uh the county. So do we have any questions or uh any comments?
Good afternoon. Uh, Mr. Chairman had to jump off, so um I don't see any hands raised currently um about the budget for the Board of Elections.
Perfect.
Anybody? Nope. All right. Well, thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Mr. Karras for your presentation, and we will move along.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
All right. Next up, everybody, we have the last presentation of the day, I believe, um with the liquor board and when we have Darlene Flynn. Are you gonna kick us off?
Yeah, thank you. Um. My name is Darling Flynn with the Budget Office and the Board of Licensed Commissioners. Um, expense budget begins on page three hundred and nineteen in the budget book. It's all yours, Judy.
Thank you, Darlene. First, I would like to thank everyone. Though I am missing a few faces there today. Um, and I want to thank Darlene for her wonderful help. She's been a pleasure to work with. Um, our mission statement is responsible for administrating and enforcing all the liquor laws in Antarctica County um as well as controlling and issuing the licenses. We have inspectors that visit each establishment at least twice a year, and they also go out on surveillances to look for minors and things that are going on. Um, we are governed under the State Alcoholic Beverages Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and our budget is approved by the State Controller's Office for the State's Alcohol and Tobacco Commission. Currently, we have three commissioners, which I'd like to introduce our new chairman, Wayne Harris. Um, they got sworn in yesterday. Um, we have five full time staff, an attorney, and nineteen inspectors. Um. The only thing is increasing is personal services, which is under the counties for their pay increase, FICA, things of that nature. So. So if you have any questions, we're kind of very slim and trimmed to the point this year.
Thank you, Judy, and congratulations, Mr. Harris. Um, any questions from my colleagues? No? Well, that was um, that was pretty pain free.
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you so very much.
I like the, I can see the view from your, is that your new offices? I hope you guys are happy in your new office.
Very much so.
Great.
So.
Fantastic. Uh, thank you so much for being here. I don't see any further questions. Um. Uh, does the, do my colleagues have any other business they want to bring before the body today? All right, uh, can we get a motion to adjourn?
I'm better, so is.
A second?
Feeder second.
All in favor? Aye. Uh, Laura, did I uh pinch hit there in a
You were.
to go for the day?
Superb, superb job. Um, uh, we meet tomorrow morning.
Yeah, we.
In the chambers at nine o'clock as the Board of Health, and then uh you will have a few more budget presentations after that, but it's uh tomorrow morning, nine o'clock in the chambers in Annapolis.
Fantastic. Well, thank you. Thank you to the behind the scenes staff, and I'll see everybody in the morning. We are adjourned for the day.
All right.